Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Yes. Mr. Bureau Patel.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng. Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Vishal Patel. Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Opening statement?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act 1973, see 231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has called notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices are sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. At this point, we will adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA Section 10412, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential personal and board matters, pending litigation, student matters, property acquisition, 2022-23 district and school self-assessment grade report. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn to privileged session, and we will resume our regular meeting at 7 o'clock.
I seconded it, Mr. Toth.
Thank you.
You didn't hear it.
Thank you. Okay?
Thanks.
All to order. At this time, we'll reconvene to open session. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Ms. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Present.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Mr. Bureau Patel.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we start our open session, we want to observe a moment of silence for two people who just passed away yesterday. They had terrific contributions to the school district. It's a huge loss for Edison Township School District, Andy Din Nicola and Jim Muldowney. Let's observe a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. So, this is going to be a long one, so bear with me. I know everyone is excited about today's presentation. So, welcome to this evening's Board of Education Action Meeting. We have a full agenda today, including facility improvements, architecture form appointments, auditor renewals, and the renewal of our financial advisor. Later, we will also discuss a C presentation of our brokers. First, I want to acknowledge that May is Asian American Pacific calendar Heritage Month. I had a pleasure of attending an impressive AAPI Assembly at Woodrow Wilson Middle School last week with our Vice President, Mr. Romano. Kudos to Mrs. Hitesh Patel, Mrs. Blevins, Mrs. Mandirata, and the staff members and all the students of Woodrow Wilson Middle School for their extraordinary efforts and students' wonderful performance at the AAPI Assembly. I would also like to congratulate all the seniors who received awards at Edison High School Senior Night here last week on May 16th. This is an event I always look forward to. Celebrating students' achievements is very important to me personally. I believe in recognizing every single improvement and achievement. For the seniors at JP Stevens High School, who will be recognized on June 6th, we look forward on celebrating with you. I also had a pleasure to attend Edison Coral Festival, where I witnessed wonderful performances by students from both the high schools. Thank you to Mr. Lee, Mr. Listner, and all the students and staff members who worked extremely hard to put such a big event together. Later this evening, I'll provide an update on our Ad Hoc Culture and Climate Committee, which I had asked Superintendent Dr. Alderelli to create that, to raise, to address the concerns that were raised regarding the student safety, vaping, and the drug issues, which is also a national issue, as well as to provide an update on the bullying data. This speaks to the vital importance of providing a positive and safe middle and high school climate to all of our students in all of our buildings. Our first meeting was very productive, and we plan to hold the webinar on June 3rd to seek parent input. I take the safety of our students very seriously, including the conditions in the bathrooms, which were brought upon to our attention recently, and the overall culture and climate of our buildings. I will continue to work with the administration in their commitment to our students. Over the past four years, I have consistently praised the hard work of all of our educators and staff members. This month, as the schools celebrated Teachers' Recognition Month, I also attended annual Guru Vandana program, which was hosted by HSS of Central New Jersey. This honors educators' contributions. The event was organized by HSS chapters in Central New Jersey and attended by several teachers from Edison Township School District, and it showcases their commitment to recognizing the significant role of our teachers. Every year, HSS invites the teachers and students, and students and parents welcome the teachers in the Guru Vandana event, which shows appreciation through traditional customs. This event emphasizes the importance of a guru, a teacher, who guides the students towards enlightenment and success. Now you won't have to wait too long. It's coming to the best part. Now, to one of my favorite parts of the year. In addition to student recognition, this evening is our annual Teacher and Educational Services Professional Recognition Night. This is a special evening for all of you, as you are the backbone of our school district. You play a very vital role in the wonderful things that our students learn and achieve every single day. Your hard work, your passion, and resilience are truly appreciated by everyone in the school district. Together, we all make Edison School District very proud. You are a testament to the extraordinary commitment to our staff, parents, and students, and the pursuit of excellence. For those who are recognized today, a huge congratulations. We heartily thank you and appreciate all your efforts and all your exceptional contributions that you make to the district every single day, and you make all of us very proud. My deepest gratitude to all of you. And to our educators who are not recognized today, you are also deeply valued. So, to all the educators and all the services professionals, everyone who is recognized today, this is your moment. Enjoy the time. And that being said, I will pass it on to our rock star, Dr. Alderelli.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Board President. Good evening, ladies and gents. How's everybody doing? Come on. We got family, friends, teachers, everybody's here. You can do a little bit better than that. How we doing? All right. This is the hashtag #WeAreOneEdison photo, all in one shot right here. So, hopefully, Ms. Daniel was able to tweet that out tonight. Listen, I'm gonna keep my comments brief this evening. I echo the sentiments of Board President Patel, and heartfelt condolences, obviously, to the families of the D. Nikolas and the Muldownes, as well as, I know they made a huge impact on staff, students, and the community here in Edison Township. So, our heartfelt condolences goes out from all of us here in Edison Township. For me, this board meeting and the one in June is why we are here, right? This is what we do. Teaching and learning, leadership, building staff capacity, student achievement, it is the most important thing that we do each and every day. And although this is the formal celebration of this, I know our building leaders, our supervisors, and our central office staff can't thank you enough for what you do for our kids each and every day. It does not go unnoticed by myself or anybody that works in my charge. I thank you so much for the work that you do. This is fantastic. Every board meeting should be like this. It should be a celebration of what we do here in Edison for our students and for our staff. You should give yourselves a round of applause. Keep up the great work. We're ending the year on a high note. We're ending the year on a high note. And with that, that'll be all my comments for this evening. Mr. Patel?
All right. Thank you so much. And next, without any further delay, we'll start the wonderful celebration, appreciating and recognizing all of you. Thank you.
On behalf of the entire JP Stevens community, I'm pleased to take a few minutes to congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Joe Cashin. I've known for about a week now that I was going to speak about Joe, so I went around asking his colleagues and students about the man. What's he really like? The words I heard over and over again were thoughtful, kind, selfless, forward-thinking. He's a man of character, exceptional character, and by the way, he's an exceptional educator. He's a leader in our English department and our school. Joe volunteers his time to help students, oftentimes during his prep period. No matter where, when, or with whom, Joe's always there to help. He coaches soccer and baseball as well, and always instills in his players and his students the confidence to do the best they can. He's a man of integrity, and I can't speak enough about Joe. He's just, it's been a super choice this year. Congratulations, Joe Cashin.
One of my favorite memories in teaching really surround all the outside of the classroom things, so helping students apply for college, apply for jobs, if there's any sort of issue with any health insurance, or any way I could just kind of help be their advocate for them, in the hopes that they then pass that on, and they continue to grow and have success beyond the classroom.
Congratulations to Shahida Eetman, the ESP of the Year and the Middlesex County School Counselor of the Year. She's our AP Coordinator handling a ton of AP exams. She's a kind and generous school counselor who works with all of her students to make sure that they're successful through high school. She runs the Black Student Union as well, and she just brings a positive, happy energy to everything she does at JP Stevens. We're so proud to have her here, and we're proud that she won these awards.
What's great about Edison High, this year's Teacher of the Year, Dr. Jonathan Clark, as our Latin teacher, he takes our students from being a lost legion of Rome to being the junior classical league. You'll find every single day, he's in the class, getting the students moving, getting them motivated, but he does so much more than that, whether it's his work with having everybody find their interroving, or it's all the work beautifying our already beautiful school with the Courtyard Club. There's nobody that cares more or bleeds more red and gold than Dr. Jonathan Clark. Thank you very much for all you do for our students.
Those moments when the interaction is such that there's humor that maybe I had not anticipated initially being there, but that moment of we're being serious, but we can also laugh about it, I think are great moments. And I'm part of the reason why I stay in the job, and I tell the students, is that they surprise me pleasantly. And it's those sort of moments of laughter, but seriousness too, that keep me going.
We are so proud to announce Ms. Arno as the Power Professional of the Year for Edison High School. Anytime you walk into a classroom where Ms. Arno is, you immediately feel the warmth that surrounds her. Students are smiling, and so are the teachers. Every teacher that I talk to about Ms. Arno has said the same thing. She goes above and beyond for her students, and you feel that when you walk in and see how drawn the students are to her. Ms. Arno, you are what's great about Edison High.
Good evening. It is my honor to recognize Ms. Cameron as our Teacher of the Year. As a dedicated 7th grade science teacher, Ms. Cameron serves as an inspiration to her students, colleagues, and our entire school community. One of her most remarkable skills is her ability to design interactive and dynamic lessons that captivate her students' imaginations. Her commitment to education extends beyond the classroom, positively impacting our school community. This year, she was also awarded Advisor of the Year by the FBLA State Organization for her outstanding work as a co-advisor. Additionally, she is one of the driving forces behind our WWMS Sunshine Club, celebrating the milestones and joyous moments of our staff. She is a champion for all students in and out of the classroom. Congratulations, Ms. Cameron, on this well-deserved recognition.
I would say one of my favorite memories is taking some of my students. I run FBLA, so we took some students to Chicago and Atlanta. It was really nice to be able to create those opportunities and experiences for them they might not have otherwise.
Good evening. Today, I have the honor of celebrating someone truly remarkable in our school community. Rula Fanek, our dedicated school nurse embodies kindness, compassion, and unwavering dedication to the well-being of our students, families, and staff. Whether providing comfort to a student in need or offering support to a worried parent, Rula consistently puts others first. Her commitment to our school community is inspiring, and I'm thrilled to announce that she has been selected for the ESP of the Year Award. Let's join together in recognizing Rula for her invaluable contributions to our school. Congratulations, Rula.
It is my honor to recognize Mrs. Maria Weber as Thomas Jefferson Middle School's Teacher of the Year. Over her remarkable 34-year career as a special education teacher, Mrs. Weber has been a beacon of inspiration in the classroom, but also a guiding light for compassion and inclusivity. Each day, she goes above and beyond to ensure that every student feels empowered to achieve their academic and personal goals. Mrs. Weber serves as an advisor for the school store, where students gain valuable skills in sales and marketing, inventory management, and teamwork under her guidance. Through her unwavering dedication and tireless advocacy, Mrs. Weber has transformed the lives of countless students. Her passion, empathy, and commitment to excellence inspire us all. Congratulations, Mrs. Weber, on this well-deserved recognition.
What resonates in me the most and makes me want to do this job is when I hear a student say to me, "Thank you for teaching me how to read. Thank you for helping me learn how to read," especially at this age. And I know that I can send them off to high school feeling comfortable that they can read at some level.
Earlier this year, Thomas Jefferson Middle School was delighted to select and announce Ms. Rita Desai as our Educational Service Professional for the 2023-2024 school year. Mrs. Desai is a paraprofessional in our LLD program, where she works with the students in a professional and caring manner each and every day. She goes above and beyond to help the students and other staff members, ensuring that the learners have the best possible opportunity to succeed. Congratulations on being selected for this well-deserved honor.
Congratulations to Mr. Adam Sack, the John Adams Middle School Teacher of the Year. His exceptional work as social studies and ACEs teacher, mentor, learning leader, team leader, parent university presenter, and AI Power Team member truly exemplify what it means to be jemazing. I'm incredibly proud of his achievements and for inspiring and shaping young minds. Thank you so much for all you do. Mr. Sack, you truly are jemazing.
When I was 16, I started coaching and teaching swimming lessons, and that was really where I, you know, kind of enjoyed the experience of being a teacher myself. Going into college, I knew right away I wanted to be a teacher, and have never really ever questioned my career choice.
Good morning. It's my great honor to recognize Mr. Abraham Glama as the John Adams Middle School Educational Service Professional of the Year. Mr. Glama is compassionate, kind, and caring, always meeting students where they are, and helps them towards their learning goals. He can be seen each and every Friday rocking his Rock House t-shirt, making sure that students are compassionate, greeting their customers, counts change, restock the shelves, and all around is a great asset to the school. So, without further ado, I'm very pleased to recognize Mr. Glama as John Adams Middle School's Educational Service Professional of the Year. Thank you.
It's my honor to introduce Mrs. Kelly Farrell, Herbert Hoover Middle School's 2023-2024 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Farrell is an experienced special education teacher who sets high standards for her students and who works tirelessly to ensure that each student meets those standards. Mrs. Farrell takes the time to understand each of her students, including who they are, how they learn, and those things that are unique to each child. A few things that make Mrs. Farrell unique are the way that she enthusiastically shares her love of her family, her work, and her Irish heritage. Each year, an entire month before St. Patrick's Day, Mrs. Farrell begins wearing outfits that are exclusively and uniquely green in color. In honor of her tribute to the Irish, I will end my recognition of her award with a limerick. Mrs. Farrell at Hoover takes the lead. In science, she plants knowledge's seed. Her experiment's pop, excitement won't stop. Congratulations, Mrs. Farrell.
I'm very fortunate. I started teaching here at Herbert Hoover when I was 22, and I have been here now for half my life, and it's crazy to say that, but just the people that I work with and the kids that I work with and the connections and the relationships that you make, it's just an indescribable thing, and it's why I come here every day and why I'm so lucky to be here.
It is my honor to present Ms. Jordan Smothers as Herbert Hoover Middle School's Educational Services Professional of the Year. For the past three years, Ms. Smothers has served as an exemplary counselor to our 8th grade class, but she goes beyond just being their counselor. She's been a mentor, a confidante, a cheerleader, and a coach to the nearly 350 students she oversees. Through her tireless efforts and genuine concern for their academic, social, and emotional growth, she has created a safe and nurturing environment where students feel valued, supported, and empowered to reach their full potential. Ms. Smothers is a true champion for our students, a pillar of strength in our school community, and a shining example of the difference that one individual can make in the lives of others. Thank you, Ms. Smothers, for all that you do for our students, their families, and our staff. We appreciate you. Congratulations.
It brings me immense joy to celebrate Ms. Cindy Asimio as our Educator of the Year at FDR. Ms. Cindy, your unwavering commitment to creating a warm, safe, and welcoming environment is truly remarkable. You lead by example, tirelessly working to ensure that each student's needs are met, and you cultivate strong relationships with both the children and their families, making sure that we have a cohesive team to support our kids. Your dedication has made a profound difference in countless lives, and we are fortunate to have you at FDR and as part of our family. Congratulations, Ms. Cindy, on this well-deserved recognition. Your passion for teaching and your enthusiasm inspires us all, and we are thankful that you are part of our school community.
When you have a child that starts school, there's no language, and then slowly they're starting to follow the routine of the day, and they start to use their words. I think those times, those memories are the best, and the parents are grateful because they have a child that might not have been speaking and now are saying a few words. And I think that's the best part of it all here, is watching the growth.
Today, I am thrilled to celebrate the incredible Ms. Carrie Aubrey, our Educational Services Professional of the Year at FDR. Ms. Carrie, you are an amazing paraprofessional. Your dedication and warmth have greeted our students for years, setting the stage for a nurturing learning environment. Your collaborative spirit ensured that every child's needs were fully understood and met, leaving a lasting impact on their growth. Ms. Carrie, your presence enriched our school community beyond measure, and thank you for everything that you've done. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
Mrs. Nunez is the kind of teacher that amazes us with her passion and urgency to reach all of her students. She goes above and beyond to engage each and every student in order to ensure that they are all actively engaged in their own learning and assessment. She has a strong connection to her multi-language learners because, as she says, "That was me." She works to ensure that all students gain empathy for people in life who have some difficulties and for animals around the world, and then she also works at the entire grade level to celebrate upbeat local traditions. Mrs. Nunez extends her support beyond her classroom, actively seeking resources and donations to establish hands-on STEM clubs for students of all ages at Woodbrook. In addition, she dedicates time to tutoring students before school hours. Behind the scenes, Mrs. Nunez orchestrates school-wide STEM activities for Halloween and for the holiday, enhancing the educational experience for the entire school community. Mrs. Nunez maintains an open-door policy for visitors and student teachers and has mentored successful new teachers as well. She's a true asset to Woodbrook, to the district, and to each and every student who's been fortunate enough to have her as their teacher. Thank you, Mrs. Nunez, for exemplifying Woodbrook's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
One of my favorite memories, actually, just this past week that passed, one of my students came up to me and said, "You know, Mrs. Nunez, I'm gonna be a teacher one day." And I said, "Really? That's amazing." And she said, "I'm gonna teach here at Woodbrook, and I'm going to be your assistant." And I said, "Really? I would love that." And I said to her, "We'll teach side by side." So, she really touched my heart when she said that to me.
Congratulations to Mr. Adenafe on being selected as Woodbrook's Educational Support Professional of the Year. Your dedication to our students is truly inspiring. Your meticulous nature shines through in the impeccable organization of our library, which fosters an environment where learning can happen. Beyond that, your readiness to assist both staff and students makes you an invaluable asset to the Woodbrook community. Thank you, Mr. Adenafe, for your outstanding contributions to Woodbrook.
Washington School is fortunate to name Ms. Jennifer Pavlichko as our Teacher of the Year. A fine product of the Edison School System herself, not a day goes by you won't find Mrs. Pavlichko laughing with students and colleagues. We sometimes joke that she should take her comedy show on the road. She is enthusiastic, creative, and truly engages students in hands-on learning. What other teacher would have a pumpkin rotting in a Tupperware container in the back of her room so that students could see how new seedlings are developed? Keep an eye out for Washington School's Pumpkin Patch coming this fall. Mrs. Pavlichko knows her students well and advocates for what they need to be successful. But what is most special about Mrs. Pavlichko is her passion to help others while expecting nothing in return. She's always one of the first to ask how she can help families in our community. She supports our families in navigating their child's education, not only in English, but by using her Spanish skills too. Delivering food to houses and pantries, donating goods, and offering to help out any way possible are just some of the ways Mrs. Pavlichko is selfless to others. She's one of our teacher liaisons to the Parent Teacher Organization. From brainstorming for fundraising ideas to the execution of events, she's our go-to. Thank you, Mrs. Pavlichko, for being a leader both inside and outside of your classroom. We are very grateful to have you at Washington School.
Seeing children when they have that lightbulb idea that comes to their mind and they really grasp onto something and understand something. Right now, in 3rd grade, we're working on multiplication, and it's like such a wonderful thing when they start to have those aha moments.
Mrs. Jonaki Sorrella is our 2024 Educational Service Professional of the Year at Washington Elementary School. She began in the district in 2016 as a substitute, joined the FDR staff as a paraprofessional in 2020, and came to Washington School in 2021. Mrs. Sorrella shows compassion for her students and respect for all. She is an inspiration to all and a valued member of our school community. Thank you, Mrs. Sorrella.
We adore Ms. Jennifer Altman, our Teacher of the Year at James Monroe. A proud product of the Edison Township School District, Ms. Altman devoted 25 years of exemplary service. One of Ms. Altman's strengths lies in her ability to connect with her students. She takes the time to truly know each child. This dedication extends beyond the classroom as she stays in contact with her students, demonstrating a genuine interest in their overall well-being. Ms. Altman has been at the forefront of educational innovation, piloting new programs, implementing standards-based report cards, and dedicating her summers to literacy academy. And her active involvement in school events exemplifies her commitment to fostering a sense of community and school spirit. In addition to her role as a teacher, Ms. Altman serves as a mentor to new educators, generously sharing her wealth of experience and best practices. Her warmth and infectious smile brightens her 1st grade classroom, and we are grateful for the positive impact she's had on the James Monroe community.
When I was little, my parents bought me this full-size chalkboard for my playroom, and I had everything. I had the chalk, the white chalk, the yellow chalk, the erasers, the chalk holders, and I would go to school and then come home and do exactly what I did at school in my playroom with my class. So, I'm not quite sure, just always something I was going to be, was a teacher, and I love it. I couldn't imagine myself doing anything. I couldn't imagine myself doing anything else.
It is an honor to congratulate Mrs. Solms as the ESP of the Year for our James Monroe community. She is a huge asset to our school building. Not only is she an amazing library aide who manages and organizes the library every day, but she also brings in monthly themes. She conducts read-alouts for our students in her daily library classes. She's even brought in stuffed animals to act as reading buddies for all of our students when they participate. She's added a puzzle table to our library, all to make the experience of reading magical and enchanting. In addition to her regular duties as our library aide, she also hosts our annual science fair, this year with over 70 participants. We are honored to present this award to Mrs. Solms. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Ms. Popper Sanos, Principal of Martin Luther King Elementary. It is my honor to celebrate MLK's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sorrelli. Ms. Sorrelli is a true champion of education whose impact extends beyond the walls of her classroom. Ms. Sorrelli is not just an educator. She's a mentor, counselor, cheerleader, and confidante. Ms. Sorrelli sees the potential in each and every child and works tirelessly to help them realize it. She creates a safe and nurturing environment where curiosity is encouraged, mistakes are celebrated as opportunities for growth, and kindness reigns supreme. Thank you, Ms. Sorrelli, for your unwavering dedication, your boundless passion, and your profound commitment to shaping the future. You are an inspiration for us all.
So my favorite memory, among many, is that my first year when I started teaching, I was walking down the hallway to my first classroom. I was nervous, and I heard somebody yell, "Michelle Dean?" And I turned around, and it was my first kindergarten teacher, and she was now my colleague. And so I got to work with her, and that was just such a wonderful memory.
I am proud to introduce Valerie Yunuzi, our Reading Specialist and Educational Support Professional of the Year. Mrs. Yunuzi displays immense dedication and passion for fostering literacy and learning at MLK. From serving on our INRS Committee as a case manager and valuable resource, furthering her education to better understand the needs of our learners, to founding our school's first reading committee, her tireless efforts have not only enriched the minds of our students, but also inspired colleagues and parents alike. Congratulations, Mrs. Yunuzi. We truly appreciate your commitment to nurturing a love for reading among our students.
This year at Menlo Park School, we have an extremely noteworthy person for our Teacher of the Year. It is none other than our music teacher, Diane Ruiz. She is absolutely phenomenal. She's always doing creative lessons. She's our Safety Patrol Advisor. She heads up our chorus. She attends every music concert and works with her other colleagues in the music department. I can't say enough good things about her. She's also involved in the Edison community as she is a chorus director at one of our nearby churches. So we wish her all the best. She's incredibly deserving. She's been part of the Menlo Park School community for 41 years, and every year, she's being creative and innovative and such an integral part of our school. So congratulations, Mrs. Diane Ruiz.
My favorite one that I have to say, I have a child that is what's called a selective mute and does not participate verbally in the class, but wrote me a song and chose to record it at home and then shared the recording with me. And I was over the moon. I just couldn't believe that. I've inspired that kid to want to actually write something and then share it with me.
Ms. Anthony embodies the unwavering dedication and tireless commitment as her role as a paraprofessional. Her boundless energy and passion infuse every aspect of her work, from supporting students' academic journeys to fostering a nurturing environment within our school community. With her compassionate spirit and unparalleled expertise, Ms. Anthony goes above and beyond to ensure every student feels valued and empowered. Her steadfast presence and invaluable contributions serve as a beacon of inspiration, shaping the future of all of our students. Today, we celebrate Ms. Anthony as Menlo Park's Educational Support Professional of the Year.
Lyndonell School is proud to present Christina Gurnevich as the 2324 Governor's Educator of the Year. Ms. Gurnevich has served as a first-grade teacher, interventionist, and kindergarten teacher throughout her 18-year career. Regardless of the role, she has earned the respect of students, families, and colleagues for her dedication to student growth and development. Mrs. Gurnevich's students describe her as fun, smart, silly, pretty, and most importantly, caring. Entering into her classroom, you will find students engaged in their daily lessons, collaborating with one another, and growing their social and academic skills in a variety of ways. It is amazing to witness the transformation of a kindergarten student from September all the way through their moving-up ceremony in June as they prepare for Grade 1. Aside from being a great teacher, Mrs. Gurnevich is a supportive colleague and champion of Lyndonell School. She serves on a variety of committees, sharing her perspective and ideas to improve the school climate and culture. For all of these reasons and so many more, we are happy to congratulate Christina Gurnevich for being selected as the 2324 Governor Educator of the Year for Lyndonell School. Congratulations, Christine.
A student that I had two years in a row. I taught her in kindergarten and then looped with her into first grade. And just seeing her blossom into the individual she became, socially, academically, in those two years, was, you know, a tremendous amount of growth. And it's nice that she still comes back to visit till this day as she's in middle school and remembers being in my class as much as I remember teaching her.
I am so excited to share that Michelle Carvasky is our Educational Support Professional of the Year. Michelle goes above and beyond every single day for the students of Lyndonell. From serving on our PBSIS Committee to staying late when our buses aren't here, Michelle really does make Lyndonell a great place to grow. Michelle, you put the excellent in ESP. We are so proud to have you as our Educational Support Professional of the Year.
Mrs. Knapp is an extraordinary teacher and even better person. She teaches self-contained LED class here at Lincoln Elementary School. Her love and passion for education can be felt as soon as you walk into her classroom. She has dedicated her career to working with children of all cultures and disabilities. She loves every student and makes sure they feel loved throughout the school day. She has every student engaged in lessons based on their readiness level. She has at times seven different lessons going on. It's truly incredible to see. She currently is the Chairperson of our Special Education Committee, the advisor to Unified Sports Club. Mrs. Knapp is a role model to all teachers and continues to welcome teachers into her classroom to model effective teaching and behavioral strategies that can be used in any classroom setting. She is the proud mom of two boys that she absolutely adores and smiles from ear to ear every time she talks about them. In her spare time, she also volunteers at a dog rescue center. We are so proud of you, Mrs. Knapp. Congratulations, Mrs. Knapp, on being Lincoln Elementary School's Teacher of the Year.
When I was in high school, I worked with the adaptive phys ed teacher with the students with disabilities, and I absolutely loved it. So when I went to college and I decided I wanted to be a teacher, I'm like, "I have to be a special education teacher." It really inspired me.
Shawnee Sasso is our Educational Service Professional of the Year, and we are so proud of her. Mrs. Sasso goes above and beyond for all our students at Lincoln Elementary School. She takes students for individual and group sessions, observes students in different settings, helps create behavior plans, and constantly advocates for students. She also takes initiative to help homeless students and their families. For example, she raised over $700 for a family in need. Ms. Sasso's door is always open to students and staff. So much so, I'm not sure how she gets anything done. Thank you for being such a resource for us all. We appreciate you so much, Mrs. Sasso. Congrats to you on this award.
I am honored to be speaking about Wendy Heck, John Marshall's Teacher of the Year. She has helped our learners become innovators, dreamers, and artists for the past 27 years. Ms. Heck has beautified John Marshall's hallways with bright and colorful hand-painted murals. If you are ever looking for Ms. Heck, you will find her in the hallway hanging up students' work. Ms. Heck also participates in school spirit and wears unique earrings that all of our learners love. She is also the Safety Patrol Advisor and always meets with her safety patrols to promote a positive school learning community. These are just some of the reasons why Ms. Heck is so deserving of John Marshall's Teacher of the Year.
Honestly, my favorite memories are the ones that kind of occur now when that little magic happens and the first grader discovers you can take a leaf under a paper and make a rubbing, and it magically appears on the paper, or that crayon and water don't mix scientifically, and now the crayon looks like it glows off the paper, and their faces light up. And so those would be probably my favorite memories that continuously happen.
Our school nurse, Brianna DiCarvallo, is a beacon of care and compassion. She's a superhero in scrubs. Brianna has a heart full of empathy and hands very skilled in healing. She is insightful and kind, and she connects school and home with her exceptional communication skills that are timely and effective. She also shares her generous smiles, and that helps everyone. Our school nurse is top-notch, unparalleled, and second to none. We love you, Mrs. DiCarvallo.
It is with great pleasure that I introduce you to Ms. Taylor Tosanati, JMP's Teacher of the Year. Since day one, Mrs. Tosanati has exhibited all of the major attributes that you want in a teacher. She demonstrates genuine care for each student, addressing their individual needs, and tirelessly working to ensure they reach their full potential. Whenever presented with a new challenge, Mrs. Tosanati accepts it eagerly and without hesitation. Outside of the classroom, she has served as a club advisor for various new clubs, including our Students' Sunshine Committee, where students created positive messages, cards, and artwork to support not only JMP community, but the Edison community as a whole. Furthermore, Mrs. Tosanati's impact extends beyond our JMP students to numerous kids eager to delve into the world of dance. Sharing her passionate expertise directly after school through her dance classes, she truly is a teacher from morning till night. In fact, it is challenging to find a moment when she's not teaching, which underscores her undeniable worthiness of this recognition. JMP is honored to have her as a cherished member of our family. Congratulations, Mrs. Tosanati, on becoming JMP's Teacher of the Year.
One thing that sticks out in my mind is when my class did a board game day. They earned a full class reward, and I said, "All right, let's bring in board games and just play for a whole afternoon." And they went above and beyond. We had like 30-plus games. And I was literally like juggling playing multiple games with them, and they were just laughing and smiling all day. And I'll never forget that day.
I am so honored to introduce our incredible Educational Service Professional of the Year, Nurse Suarez. She is an integral part of not only JMP, but also the Edison community. She goes above and beyond for JMP students, staff, each and every day. She helps heal more than cuts and scrapes. She also helps heal hearts. Congratulations, Ms. Suarez.
Mr. Morales is a positive force in our school. Over his time at JMI, he has fostered a love of physical education in his students in a variety of different settings, showing his ability to adapt to an ever-changing environment. Whether teaching in the multipurpose room, classrooms outside, or in the hallways, Mr. Morales figures out a way to get students to be physical and challenge themselves. Mr. Morales is the epitome of a lifelong learner, and he always finds ways to improve his craft and his goal of engaging all his students. Whether starting his class with his famous dad jokes or learning how to communicate with nonverbal students, Mr. Morales strives to make a personal connection with all his students. His passion for fostering healthy lifestyle extends beyond the walls of our classroom with him getting students involved in our cricket club, basketball club, and our Project Unify. As our Project Unify Ambassador, Mr. Morales is constantly finding ways to bring out the best in our students and make our JMI community more inclusive and caring. Thank you, Mr. Morales, for your leadership, dedication, commitment, your never-ending supply of not-too-terrible dad jokes, and for caring about our students as if they are your own. Congratulations, Mr. Morales, on being named JMI's 2024 Teacher of the Year.
When I was done playing baseball at the age of 18 for like recreation, he said, "What are you gonna do now?" I said, "I have no idea." And he said, "You're gonna come coach for me." I was like, "Oh, I am?" He goes, "Yeah, I think you'd make a great coach. I've seen you, you know, with kids and everything. You're great with kids. So you're gonna come coach with me." And just being his assistant coach and watching how he dealt with the kids, it inspired me to want to, you know, do the same thing, so.
I would like to congratulate Ms. Laura Stor as the Educational Support Professional of the Year for James Madison Intermediate School. Ms. Stor is instrumental in the inclusion of our self-contained and special education population into the general school community. Ms. Stor works hand-in-hand with the self-contained teachers and the general education teachers in making sure that all students receive the expressive and receptive language skills necessary to be successful. And that's why I would like to express a special thank you to Ms. Stor for all that you do here at JMI. Congratulations again, Ms. Stor, as the Educational Support Professional of the Year.
It is my pleasure to introduce you to Ben Franklin's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sophie Sharacara. Sophie serves as one of our self-contained teachers here on the Ben campus, and I can't even begin to commend her for her high levels of energy, commitment, and dedication to serving our children. She is highly collaborative, exceptionally empathetic, super compassionate, and just an overall exceptional human being. I am so proud of you, Sophie. Congratulations.
It's not the big things, it's like the tiny things. So for them to just say something or make a sound independently or go on their own and transition into another classroom by themselves and not feel so scared and make them feel like it's home in my classroom and this whole school community feel like home for them, I think that's the greatest memory.
It is now my pleasure to introduce to you Ben Franklin's Educational Support Professional of the Year to someone who has been most deserving of this award for some time, Ms. Jessica Flores. Ms. Flores is Ben's Gaddens Counselor and is a true figurehead here on our campus. Jessica is highly compassionate, super energetic, and comes to work each and every day with the mindset of making the lives better for our students, while simultaneously making herself available to all of our staff members for whatever the need may be. She's credited with many initiatives, including our PBSIS program. I'm super proud of you as well, Jessica. I hope you're proud of yourself. Continue to let your lightning shine.
I am thrilled to announce that Ms. Laura French is the Educator of the Year at EELC. Ms. Laura, you are a magician in the classroom, turning learning into pure fun. Your dedication to our students is unparalleled, and you make a relationship with each child, ensuring their success. But what really sets you apart is the magic that you bring, the way you light up a room and make learning an adventure. Your rapport with students is incredible, creating a positive and happy environment where every child thrives. You truly love each child, meeting them at their need. We are so lucky to have you at the EELC. Congratulations, Ms. Laura French, on this well-deserved recognition, and may the force be with you as you continue to spread your magic in the classroom.
I do. There's so many memories, but one year, several years ago, I had end-of-the-year graduation and preschool program, and there was a student that was usually in a wheelchair, and he had learned to walk with a walker, and he was able to walk in the procession. And there wasn't a dry eye in the house. And the same program, we also had a mom that had returned from deployment, and we were able to capture a video of her seeing her child for the first time. And it was just, it was just a great memory that we always, I think I'll always remember.
It is my distinct honor to recognize Mr. Bill Donner as our Educational Services Professional of the Year at EELC. Mr. Bill, you are an amazing child-study team case manager who ensures that every child's needs are met and tailored. Collaborating seamlessly with our teaching staff, you guide each student towards success. Your genuine care shines through as you give those high fives to every child as they enter school every day. Mr. Bill, you are an incredible asset to EELC. We are fortunate to have you, and this recognition is truly a mark of everything that you do for kids.
All right, congratulations once again, everyone. That was better than watching a Super Bowl. So, thank you so much. Now I would like to give the floor to Mrs. Gomer, who will... Now I would like to give the floor to Mrs. Gomer, who will, you know, honor you all, and let's take some great pictures with bouquet of flowers, and let's celebrate, everyone. Thank you. Here you go, Mrs. Gomer.
Board of Education President Beryl Platale, Vice President Joe Romano, and the rest of the Board of Education welcome here tonight. This is my, by far, my favorite day of the year. Every time I interview a new candidate to our district, I ask them why they went into the educational profession, either as teachers, or a counselor, librarian, whatever it is. I find that they fall into three categories. The first is, they say, "I knew when I was in elementary school." The second one is, "I went into career and I felt my calling was to work with kids." And the third is, "Often, I had a teacher who..." fill in the blank. Regardless of why all of these teachers here today went into the profession, I'm pretty confident, as we all are, that you definitely are going to be those teachers who now inspire your students to go into the profession. And it's my distinct pleasure to be able to stand up here and say thank you to you. I'm gonna be calling each recipient up with their principal and their vice principals, if they are here. If you would come up to the front, family, this is when you get to cheer, take pictures, and just be that supportive family, and get to really celebrate your people today. So first up, I'd like to ask Dr. Brevier to come up to present to Sophie Sharacara and Jessica Flores. Families, don't be scared to come up and take pictures, we know how you are. From James Madison Intermediate School, I'd like to call up Ms. Donna Abbott Marco and Brian Murphy to present to Christopher Morales and Laura Stor. From James Madison Primary School, I'd like to call up Mr. Seiler, Taylor Tosanati, and Liza Suarez. From James Monroe Elementary School, I'd like to call up Ms. Cindy DeFarrow and Maggie Callenahan, and Ms. Jennifer Altman and Erin Solms. From John Marshall Elementary School, I'd like to call up Ms. Amy Hoffman, Ms. Wendy Heck, and Brianna DiCarvallo. From Lincoln Elementary School, I'd like to call up Mr. Sean Scully, Tony DiFazio, Lisa Knapp, and Shani Sasso. From Lyndonow Elementary School, we have Mr. Platt Voit, Jennifer Fisher, Christina Gurnevich, and Michelle Karvatsky. From Menlo Park Elementary School, come up Mr. Duggan and Dr. Feldman, Diana Ruiz, and Hema Anthony. From Martin Luther King Elementary School, Ms. Gina Papacernos and Lisa Dedelback. If Michelle Servesky and Valerie Uzzi could please come up. From Washington Elementary School, Sandra Schlatter and Traklan Vu to present to Jennifer Pavlichko and Janiki Sorilla. From Woodbrook Elementary School, if Ms. Sorilla and Mr. Randy Norvias can come up, Lana Nunez and David Adenoffi. From Herbert Hoover Middle School, Mr. Brian McGrath, and his honorees Kelly Farrell and Jordan Smothers. From John Adams Middle School, Dr. Joan Valentine, going to present to Adam Sack and Abraham Galama. From Thomas Jefferson Middle School, presenting Ms. Antoina Emden, Maria Weber, and Rita Desai. From Woodrow Wilson Middle School, Jennifer Blevins, Nick Zikino, and Renu Mandarada. Presenting Christine Cameron and Gruila Fanek, could not be here today. From Edison High School, Mr. Charles Ross to present Dr. Jonathan Clark and Yo Costa Arno. And from JP Stevens High School, Mr. Robert Robertson to present to Joseph Cashin and Shahida Hall-Eetman. And from EELC, Dr. Anthony Shalit to present to Laura French and Bill Donner. And if I can ask Dr. Shalit to stay up there. From FDR, he will be presenting to Cindy Assimio and Carrie Aubrey. Congratulations to all the recipients. And to all the teachers and staff, you are why we can do what we do. You are the heart of this organization, and we thank you for a beautiful year.
Thank you, Mrs. Gomer, and thank you so much, all the wonderful teachers and all the ESPs of the year, congratulations. Before we dismiss you all to your after-parties, wherever you're going, like Tommy's, or Applebee's, or Friday's, or wherever, we just want a couple of more minutes from you so that you can see our wonderful student representatives. So, first from Edison High School, Mrs. Charvi Padmanabini.
Good afternoon, Board of Education members and public. My name is Charvi Padmanabini, and I'm the Student Council President and CEDO Representative from Edison High School. Recently at Edison High School, we had our Battle of Classes event. It went successfully, and we had over 120 students in attendance. It started during Period 11 and ended towards 4:00 p.m. Towards the end of the event, we had free bubble tea for the students who signed up, which was sponsored by Akhihi Bubble Tea. The event ended in a tie, causing the Student Council to host a penny war, which will be held during the lunches. Classes and staff will be able to compete by giving money in pennies in a jar to see who can raise the most money to win Battle of Classes event. We'll be having our culture fair on May 24th that the DECA is hosting. This will allow students to immerse themselves in the different cultures at Edison High School. The orchestra concert will be on May 23rd from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and we hope it goes successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, JP Stevens Student Council President, Mr. Aaron Bunsell.
Good evening, everyone, and a big congratulations to all the honorees here tonight. My name's Aaron Bunsell, and I'm the Student Council President at JP Stevens High School. Since the last Board of Education meeting, our student body has continued participating in their respective extracurricular activities and are wrapping up their club events for the year. Recently, our Model United Nations Club hosted their own conference, the Gyps Mon, which was their final conference for the year as a club. We've also been making significant strides in promoting inclusivity within JP Stevens as we sent our diversity, equity, and inclusion team to Woodrow Wilson to present to the students from all four middle schools. Additionally, our music program with our school band performed this month, also at Woodrow Wilson, due to the renovations currently occurring on our auditorium. In addition to these events, the spring sports are also wrapping up, and our sports teams have been doing amazing. Three members of our boys tennis team won their respective flights in the Tennis GMC Tournament this year. And in spring track, both our boys and girls distance teams and the high jumps teams set school records and placed top three in their respective GMC tournaments. Moving on to Student Council matters, we've wrapped up our annual spring event, JPS Family Feud, that took the place of our old JP tradition, Mr. JPS. The event was very successful and is something we hope to run in the future as well. We hosted our Teacher Appreciation Breakfast this month, where many of our teachers came together and received appreciation gifts from the Student Council. Overall, it was a huge success, and our teachers were very grateful for the breakfast. In the coming weeks, we'll be organizing our yearly BOTC event, which is In the coming weeks, we'll be organizing our yearly BOTC event, which is currently being set for mid-June. We're also continuing our BOTC mini-games during the launch periods, which have been a great success and have helped us foster a greater school spirit. Overall, JP Stevens has been conducting many events and I hope the Board has gained a good perception of JP's current affairs. Thank you all, not only for your time, but the consistent effort each and every one of you guys put into making all of this possible. Your efforts don't go unseen and they continue making a difference in each and every one of our lives every single day. So, thank you.
To both our high school representatives, at this point, we'll dismiss you all to your after-parties. Congratulations, all the best, and have a wonderful rest of the school year. At this point, Board will take a recess and we'll reconvene back soon. Thank you. I'll call the order again. At this point, we'll open up for public comments resolutions only.
Board President?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce a resolution, actually, and make a motion to introduce a resolution we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. This resolution would be to bring back a portion of Item 4 from last month's meeting. Since that meeting, this was about academy construction, since that meeting, John Toth, our Business Administrator, has given the Board plenty of education on what a co-op is. We had plenty of times to ask Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth about co-ops and we actually discussed this in our committee as well, which you'll hear about, I'm sure, in the minutes. So, I'd like this resolution and this motion to include the following bullet points from Item 4 from last month's agenda, which was tabled. It's a total of 23 bathrooms for bathrooms for our entire district. To be specific, this is four bathrooms for Ben Franklin, four bathrooms for this building, Edison High School, five bathrooms for Herbert Hoover Middle School, two bathrooms for Lincoln Elementary School, four bathrooms for Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and four bathrooms for MLK Elementary. That is a total of 23 bathrooms for a total of $1,393,536. So, those bullet points would be the motion on the floor. Please, Mr. President. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, Board Member comments, then we'll open up to public comments on the resolution.
I'm for putting everything that was tabled on today's agenda.
You can do a vote on the roll call. You will get a opportunity during the roll call. You are for it, right? Okay. Any other Board Member comments?
My motion on the floor is just the bathrooms right now, Mr. Rivera.
Yeah, my motion is to put everything that was tabled on it, if possible.
There is only one motion right now. Mr. Schneider has put a motion for bathrooms. He has stated in detail about all the amount and all the motions. Any Board Members have any comment on that specific motion that Mr. Schneider put together here? Yes, Mrs. Peng?
So, this is just to go without bidding? Is that, we're going to give it to co-op without bidding? That's the motion?
So, what Mr. Toth showed us was that...
This is the first time I'm hearing this resolution, so I'm just asking.
So, Mrs. Peng, I will answer to that.
Sure.
So, Mrs. Peng, that is correct. It is without bidding. This is the same, from my understanding, and I will have to have Mr. Toth weigh in here. From my understanding, yes, Mr. Schneider, you are correct. This was tabled in the last meeting. We tabled quite a few things here. We tabled almost over $3 million of work. Then in the following meeting, probably it was May 7th, we brought some stuff back, which was crucial, such as JMI Turfill. Some of the things were important, right, like to get the Success Academy started on time, right? The bathrooms and everything is summer work. Right now, Mr. Schneider, just to correct, you're only specifying about the bathrooms, right?
23 bathrooms throughout town.
So, 23 bathrooms, so let's take more time. 23 bathrooms. There was stuff other than that, but we are talking about 23 bathrooms here. We tabled other stuff such as painting, painting the gym, right, Mr. Toth? There was painting a gym in the stuff we tabled?
Painting of the gym.
Yeah, painting of the gym. There was, yeah, gym painting, new ceiling in classroom, multipurpose room renovations and all the other stuff. Over here, the motion is for the bathrooms. What happened is, academy construction, and it's from what I understand, is a part of the co-op, had got almost close to $4 million of work, or about $3 million of work.
This motion is 1.393.536, not 4 million. Thank you.
I get it, yes. Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Toth, I believe, has a record of the motion and before we make a roll call, we'll probably make sure what the motion is. So, the table was to, you know, because everything was going to one company without any public bids. So, this means, if we agree to this motion, we are not going to bid. We are not going to bid for the work. So, about 1.5 million of work goes without bidding. We are going out without bidding. We already approved without bidding last month or this month. Some work for Turfill, for Success Academy, and for other stuff to academy construction. Now, academy construction, I don't know which company is that, what they do. Maybe they are a construction company, maybe they are a good company, they are a bad company. I don't know anything about it. But so, my concern over here is academy construction should not be getting millions of dollars of work here without bidding. By doing this, we are giving one company millions of dollars of work without bidding. I've said my statement as a Board Member comment. If anyone doesn't have any Board Member comments, we'll go open up to public for the comments.
Board President, I have a Board Member comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So, in our Finance Committee meeting, we talked about it and also on email. When you say there's no bidding, that's misleading because the way that the co-op works is that these companies have to be vetted through the state co-op and they bid to get into the state co-op. Is that correct, Mr. Toth?
That's correct.
So, by saying it's not being bid would not be accurate? The second part is that we do, even with a co-op, from our learning from Mr. Toth, they have to still get multiple quotes, right? So, the totality of this work, which is 1.393.536, was less than half of what the second quote was. And while I appreciate our stewardship of tax dollars, I'm very concerned about 23 bathrooms throughout town that need to be renovated. We also have a lot of behavior issues in our bathrooms that, as Board Members, we hear about a lot. And what I find is, the nicer our bathrooms are, the nicer our facilities are, we will respect the facility, we'll respect the schools. You're chuckling, but that's true.
Let's not go over face gestures, like how I'm chuckling. That's not a discussion here. You introduce a resolution, I am, Mr. Schneider, I am not looking to pick up a fight here. As a Board President, introduce a resolution, I am doing a process over here where Board Members comment and then public will comment, and then we'll make a roll call. This thing may pass, it may not pass. I am just doing a process here.
So, Mr. Patel, it's my floor right now.
So, do not go by my face gestures. You put a resolution, I respected that. I did not even do a table of the motion, okay? I did not even do a table of the motion. I'm just saying my comment, so don't say I'm chuckling here.
Mr. Patel? It's my floor, thank you.
Okay.
So, 23 bathrooms, I think that breaks down to about $63,000 a bathroom. If it has to go to bid, meaning not go through the co-op and go to bid, my understanding is each and every one of those 23 bathrooms would need architectural drawings associated with it. Okay? Am I right, Mr. Toth?
That's correct.
So, one thing is for sure, if we don't approve this, as it was on our agenda last month, our children won't have renovated bathrooms this year. This was summer work. If we approve it right now, tonight, we have 23 fresh bathrooms scattered throughout this district for our schoolchildren. And I believe that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, Mr. Toth, why did we, why cannot we go out for bid here? I did not, from my conversations with yourself, with everyone else here, I do not anticipate or see a situation where students cannot have bathrooms this year, renovated this year. I am under the understanding that in the Finance Committee, from what we discussed, is we'll go out for bid. That was my understanding. The bids can go out after, yes, Mr. Kolibaz or someone mentioned about the architect being involved, I get that. But what is the rocket science in this bid that we cannot renovate the bathrooms this year if we go out for bid?
So, first of all, speaking to these projects, which are our summer projects, and I, you know, there's a lot about co-op and we're not bidding this, that's, I just want to be very clear. The company that's on the co-op for whatever it is, whether it's masonry, general construction, plumbing, they are awarded a bid for that work. They have a bid and the lead agency, whether it's the state of New Jersey and we're the secondary to that contract or it's the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey or 100 and Educational Services or EdData, whoever it is, they're the lead agency. They've bid this, they've awarded the contract for whatever it is. Could be general construction, like I said, or some other product and service. So, this is technically, it's been bid. They're the lowest. Could we get lower if we do the bid ourselves and hire an architect? Possibly, possibly not. In regards to that resolution that was tabled, the reason why we chose to utilize the co-op in terms of, when it was the Success Academy, was in order to get the project done in a short period of time. So, six weeks, seven weeks of summer. Same thing with bathrooms, right? Ideally, you get out of school June 30th, things are done, you want to have work start around the 1st of July and hopefully get done, you know, somewhere in the end of August. So, it's, you utilize the co-op in order to expedite things and get, you know, projects done in a short period of time because it takes out some of the additional design that's already been done by whoever's on the co-op's in-house people, along with mobilizing and things of that nature. If we do go out to bid, which we could, and it comes back, it may be higher. It might be difficult to get on the winner-winning contractor schedule. And could it be done during the year? Yeah, probably. But you're probably looking at second shift work, right? So, looking at 4:00 to midnight, going to pay a premium for that. So, that usually goes under premium time. So, I mean theoretically, you could do one or the other. The idea was to get this done as quickly as possible in order to benefit the kids, right? We put this as part of our budget plan. It was part of our budget presentation, which we approved. So, we were trying to move it forward. That's why the resolution was there. But in terms of compliance, it's a compliant bid. In terms of procurement, it's just a matter of someone else did the bidding for us rather than us doing it ourselves. I hope I answered that.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. That was a very good explanation and we appreciate the whole response. And I know we discussed over emails that you explained to Board Members about the whole co-op process. Now, here's the thing. I don't know if any Board Member is not supportive of the summer projects. This is for our schools. We all support you of the summer projects. The concern over here for us, academy construction, the same company, same company getting so much of work, right? Is it a fault of a Board Member here? No, this is not a fault of a Board Member. The same company getting so much of work, millions of dollars. It is clearly not justified when everything comes on the agenda at the same time which came in last month. It was close to $4 million of work. Absolutely, we should have planned this better. They should have came up earlier in the year and they should have came up probably in February or later. But if we bring on the agenda like $4 million of academy construction and if we were anticipating bid, we should have gone out for bid earlier in the year. We should have planned this. This gives us a little bit of discomfort right now in saying that, you know, whatever we have coming up in the next future months, for which we will have to go over this tabling of the motion and, you know, bringing the motion back and things like that, and then we will be running out of time. So, it's more of a planning thing I'm really concerned about here. So, that's one of the concern I have. And my other concern is really not against bathroom work or anything, but really against academy construction. Other thing I heard, Mr. Toth, in your statement is probably it will be delayed and stuff like that. So, there are some calculative words over here where you say, you know, it may be overnight work, it may be delayed and stuff like that. So, this is all about planning, right? Nothing is impossible. It definitely sounds like there could be a potential delay in the summer work and we are into May 24th, so we understand that. But if you go out for bid, let's say tomorrow you reach out to architect, because this thing we have been discussing from one month now. So, tomorrow if you reach out to architect and go for bid, is it absolutely impossible to do the, get the bathroom renovations done? That's my question.
Right, so, speaking to bidding, so as we're discussing this, right, with co-ops and when we can bid, I just want to be very clear when I speak to everyone, right? So, this project was part of the 2025, 2425 school budget, which we just passed. So, since the project was there, the funding was there. The earliest we could have went out to bid was probably now or next month. So, the most expedient matter to get it done was to put it on co-op, to get it done during the summer. So, from an administrative perspective, we did our diligence in order to trying to get this complete as quickly as we can possible. Now, if we're going to explore doing our own bid, right, we have two architects currently on, as Architect of Records. I would just need the Board to tell me which one you'd like me to reach out to in order to give them these projects because I'm not going to make that decision.
Does the Board break that decision? Does the Board tell administration which architect to use for a project?
So, since I've been here, we've discussed it and, you know, we're discussing as a Board now, but since I've been here, we've discussed as a committee, like in facilities, we've had a conversation. All right, we have this project coming up. We have 1, 2, 3 architects as Architect of Record. Which one would you like to give it to? Because you know what? I don't want to say that I gave this architect this project or I gave that architect. It's not, it's not John Toth. It's the Edison Board of Education that should make that decision or the Edison Finance and Facilities Committee and so on and so forth.
Mr. Toth, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, if your argument is...
That's fine.
I'm sorry?
That's okay. I want to do, continue, but you can go. I'll go after you.
Did you follow up? I apologize.
Brian, you're the floor. Brian, you're the floor.
So, I have a question for you. It seems like the issue is they don't want to give a company $4 million. Don't we have companies that we pay millions of dollars already? Like DMR, I'm sure gets paid millions of dollars. Nobody's questioning that. We have bus companies making millions of dollars. Nobody's questioning that. We have food services making millions of dollars and no one's questioning that. I'm just trying to figure out why this one particular company is being questioned. We pay tons of people millions of dollars throughout the school year. To me, these are projects that need to be done for our students. Some of them could even be safety issues. Like, I'm curious, like the ceiling tile replacement, is it a danger? Is it going to collapse on our kids? Like, I don't understand why we're not looking at these projects. These are recommendations from the superintendent, who he feels that the work needs to be done. He, as the superintendent, decided to go through a co-op. We, as a Board of Education, should respect that. If we don't like the process that he took, then we have a conversation with him. But it makes complete sense. How could you budget for a project when you haven't even had the budget approved yet? This work needs to be done. Not just the bathrooms, all of it needs to be done. And I don't see why we're having a month of an argument of this. If the Board doesn't like how the process was done, great, we have a conversation with Eddie afterwards in the future. Could we please go a different route? But right now, this work needs to be done.
So, I think my concern is not... Right, now, Michelle, you're the floor. Yeah, so my concern is not the company. My concern is the process and planning, right? I don't believe that you cannot design bathrooms without getting budget approved. Is that accurate statement? I know you cannot go to bid. Can you design bathrooms without budget?
Right, so, to design bathrooms, right, to have a bid spec done, we'd have to have discussion in committee, right? And give it to...
Short answer, yes or no, right?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Can you design bathrooms without having budget approved?
As long as you have the money in the budget to pay for design.
Correct, right?
Right, so, so if those, so what I would, what I would say is, if you didn't have money allocated for the professional service for set architect, whatever, whatever that cost is, let's say $100,000 arbitrarily, if you didn't put that there when the FY 2024 budget was built, then it's not there unless a motion is made to transfer money into those lines.
So, I think, so you look like, the way it looks like right now is Board is trying to hinder administration and that's not anybody's goal.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's accurate.
But this argument looks like that, right? At the end of the day, at least where I send, I'll approve it, right? But I want administration to take this as a feedback that you can plan this better. I don't like the part that you keep defending the planning. I think there is a lack of planning somewhere. I don't want to get into details in this public meeting, but we can talk about it. I'm sure that this can be planned. That's what's bothering me, right? At the end of the day, the project has to be done. I agree with Doug and Brian. The project has to be done. It's for the students. And it's too late in the game for us to do anything about it, but we shouldn't be in this position to begin with.
Right. Well, Mr. Patel, to your point, I will say that, in my opinion... Mr. Patel, to your point, I will say that, in my opinion, right?
Right, absolutely.
My staff, Mr. Colibis, Dr. Alderelli, I think we put forth a very responsive plan and this was a good plan. It was good for the kids. So I still stand by our action as to what we did.
I respect your stand.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vishal Patel for the explanation. So, yes, I agree a hundred percent and that's what I said earlier. There is a lack of proper planning here. This has to, the financial items, if we would have known this before, we could have understood. My concern still remains about everything going to one company over here, that is academic construction. That's, that's my biggest concern. The reason to go out of bid is academic construction. So yes, can we plan better? Yes, we can plan better. But also academic construction getting all these things, if absolutely if we go out for bid, Mr. Toth is one hundred percent correct. The cost could be higher. If we go out for bid, it could be higher. It could be lower, it could be same, it could be anything.
Could be cheaper.
Could be cheaper, anything. When we go out for bid, it's a public bid. When people open the packets, we'll know. When Mr. Toth's office opened the packets, we'll know. But academic construction is something that personally concerns me very much and that was my biggest concern, everything going to one company. That was the concern last month when we tabled this. That was the concern when we discussed this in finance and that is, the concern still remains the same. Nobody here is against the bathrooms. We want to get it done. We always proponent of getting stuff done. But that one company, the academic construction, is bothers me personally a lot. Why is everything to just this one company and so much work? It's concerning for, for this particular area. Thank you. Mr. Romano, yes, go ahead.
There was a motion made by a board member and it was seconded. The motion was for the remodeling of twenty-three bathrooms, I believe. That is not four million dollars. It's less. The rest of the project is not, we're not talking about that now. We're talking about twenty-three bathrooms. The rest of the project, if you want to go out to bid on that, if you want a motion on that, you can. But the fact is, is that it's twenty-three bathrooms that we're talking about. The funding is there for it. If you don't like the construction company or the bonding company or the company that's part of the co-op, it is your opinion to vote yes or no. But the motion on the table right now, it came through Mr. Snyder. I seconded that. The comment from the board, I am commenting that I seconded the twenty-three bathrooms with the co-op. I'm not talking about the other parts of that bid. I'm talking about twenty-three bathrooms. That, if you look at the program, if you listen to Mr. Snyder, it's called comprehension. You listened to twenty-three bathrooms. It's not anything else. It's twenty-three bathrooms. It comes out to somewhere around sixty-three thousand dollars per bathroom. The motion has been put on the floor. It was seconded. The board members have made decisions. Any other board members would like to make a comment on it. But there's a motion, there's a motion that's been put on the floor.
Yes, everyone knows, Mr. Romano, there is a motion and Mr...
It was seconded.
Yes, everyone knows, Mr. Romano, there was a motion and you seconded the motion and Mr. Snyder explained in detail about the whole motion. And board members also weighed in. Mr. Rivera weighed in, Mr. Vishal Patel weighed in, Mrs. Speng weighed in, and I weighed in. Everyone has the right to state their opinion here.
Their opinion on the twenty-three bathrooms?
Exactly.
Not on anything else?
Exactly. Everyone has a right to state their opinion on the twenty-three bathrooms here and the cost and the company and everything related to it. It is about twenty-three bathrooms. We get that. And we also discussed this in the finance meeting that everyone, I specifically said for myself, I have an opinion. I am a taxpayer of this town. I am concerned about taxes. I agree with Mr. Toth and I said that before. And just to remind that, I will say that again. When we go out for bid, the bid may come out to be the same. The bid may come out higher. We don't know that. At this point, I had no level of comfort with academic construction for those items. We agreed to certain items, we brought it back. At that time, I did not have comfort and my position in the finance meeting was the same. I did not have comfort moving forward with the academic construction. My position stays the same. I'm not comfortable going with the academic construction, giving all that work to one company. It's as simple as that. Because I believe as a taxpayer, I don't think that's the right thing to do. There are other concerns here. I don't think there is any disagreement on getting the bathroom work done. One hundred percent agree upon getting the bathroom work done. All right? That being said, I'll open it up for public comments for this resolution only.
All resolutions, no?
Just this resolution, because this resolution was introduced.
The only mission, the only thing that was introduced was the bathrooms.
Let's check with that attorney, Mr. Minch. What do you suggest on the public comment? Just this resolution or all the resolutions?
That's up to the board. If you want to make a motion to open it to the public on this resolution, you can. You don't have to because it's a resolution. But if you want to do...
Okay, in that case...
Or you can vote on it as part of your whole package. It's, right now, there's a motion and a second that was made prior to the...
We'll just introduce this resolution and do a public comments combined for all resolutions.
Normal public comments on the resolution. So you could open public for everything right now. You could open public for just this.
All right, so we'll open up for public comments for all resolutions in that case.
Sir, there was a motion put on the table.
It's a joke. Mr. Romano, it is for all, public comments for all resolutions. We are including this resolution. Mr. Toth, you got the motion, right? Then Mr. Snyder, you added it?
No, that's not the way it works. Mr. Snyder put up a motion. Someone seconded it. The motion was for twenty-three bathrooms. It's not for everything. It's only for the twenty-three bathrooms. Mr. Attorney, is that true?
Yes, that's accurate.
Yes, we are including that resolution.
I think that the question simply is...
We'll vote separately on the resolution.
Right, you can vote separately on this resolution now without opening up to the public for comment on this. You can open it up to comment on, just on this resolution and then vote. You can, you know...
We will include the resolution.
It's up to the board how you want to proceed. Is a motion seconded on that issue?
We'll vote on this resolution separately. It will not go under personnel, finance, or any other administration item. It will be a separate motion. But in terms of public comments, we'll open it up for the public comments for all resolutions, including this resolution. Public comments for all the resolutions, including this resolution.
I think there should be a motion...
Mr. De Pasquale.
I think if you're going to do that, there should just be a motion from the board to open to the public on, you know, to hold this, to hold the vote on this resolution until after the public comment on the resolutions and to open the meeting for public comment on all the resolutions. That's what the board wants to do.
Hold on, Mr. De Pasquale, sorry. So you said we can do a one public comment for all the resolutions, right?
Yes, you can. I'm just saying that I think the board should make a motion to do that. It's still, it's still a question of what the board as a whole wants to do. So if the board as a whole...
Can the board make a motion when there's a motion already on the table?
Well...
You are suggesting a motion to...
I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking the legality.
I'm asking our attorney, Mr. Romano.
Can we make a motion when there's a motion on the table now? Because we have to vote on the motion that's on the table and it was seconded.
Well, everyone got that here. I'm asking our attorney.
I can, I can ask, I can answer the question.
Yes.
So, so, Mr. Romano, so the board can, that's, you don't have to. That's what I'm saying is you could make a motion essentially, essentially, whether you want to get technical about it. It's, it's a motion to table the vote on this, this motion until after public comment on the resolutions and then you can remove it from the table for purposes of voting. But we're making it way more complicated. That's the proper procedure. I think we're making it way more complicated as necessary. If the board wants to vote, if a majority of the board wants to vote on this resolution right now, then the board can vote on this resolution right now. If the majority of the board wants to open it to the public for either this resolution or all resolutions, then the board can make a motion to table the vote on this until after public comment. Either way, my recommendation is that a majority of the board should decide whether or not you want to vote now and then proceed with the rest of your agenda or to wait and vote on this after a public comment. That's up to a majority of the board.
Shouldn't the board wait to hear the, the point of public comments is for the board to hear the public concern to make a decision?
Does anyone have table on the motion? If there's no table, we are adding it to the resolution anyways, right? So what's the point of just not adding to the resolution? If nobody's objecting to, nobody's saying table, then that will be added to the resolution.
No, I don't think, Mr. President, I don't think that's what's being asked right now. There was a motion and a second. There's been discussion. So now, my opinion is that there is only two current options, well, two and a half current options. Option one is you have a vote right now on this resolution. No further discussion, you vote on it. Option two is you table the vote on, on this resolution until after there is public comment. And then after public comment, you can then vote on this resolution.
Well, that's what I was going to...
Either way, a majority of the board should decide whether or not they vote now or open it to the public. Legally, you can do either one, but everything has to be done by a majority of the board. So that's what we need to do. The majority of the board has to give an opinion on this. Either vote now, someone can call the question and say, I want to call the question. There's a second, there'd be a vote. Or someone should say, I moved to table until after public comment and to open it for public comment, somebody can second it and there would be a vote. But there has to be a vote. The board has to do something to move this forward, one or the other.
To be clear, Mr. Minch, are you suggesting that public comment for this resolution is only this resolution or can we encompass, as per the agenda, six minutes in totality for all resolutions, including this one? The reason for my question, Mr. De Pasquale was right there at the podium. Would he be speaking six minutes about this, six minutes about the other thing and then six more minutes? So that's eighteen minutes of Mr. De Pasquale?
Yes.
Or are we suggesting that there's a resolution period which encompasses this?
So you could do whatever you want. My recommendation was that you just do all public comment for the resolutions at one time.
Thank you.
That's what I was doing.
That was my suggestion. But again, a majority of the board has to make a motion.
Everyone in favor to go or public comments and anyone in opposition of going all public comments or do I have to do a roll call really for that, Mr. Toth? If nobody's objecting, then we'll do all public comments and resolution. Anyone in objection with that? I don't see anyone unless...
We're roll calling to go to public comments?
We are going to public comments.
Okay.
Since we've had so much discussion on this, I, I just, somebody should make a motion to hold off on a vote on this resolution and to open it for public comment for all resolutions. And then we can close public comment and vote. So somebody needs to make that motion and then somebody needs to second it. And then there can be a roll call vote.
Or motion for that.
So, so, could we, could we first vote? Actually, my motion then, my original motion, can I amend that to just add it to the agenda then?
You can do that too.
So then we've, my motion is everything I said to add to the agenda. That's, that's first thing we do as a board. Then the next thing is you could say, well, we'll, we'll just add that. So now that's done and then the public can comment on what we're talking about. That works too.
I like that idea.
Right? Thank you. That works too.
All right, so motion, there's no motion now.
So Mr. Snyder has amended his motion. He's amended his motion.
He has motion, okay. He's amended his motion.
And it's been seconded.
amended, amended, seconded, all right.
So, so the motion, it is, is to add this to the agenda, the twenty-three bathrooms, as Mr. Snyder has mentioned. So the motion right now would be to add it to the agenda. If that motion passes, it's just a procedural motion. We would then move forward with the agenda and then after public session, you would have an opportunity to vote on the substance of that motion.
Correct.
So it's two votes. Add to the agenda is vote one and then later is on the merits.
Yes.
Okay, so your motion seconded, so you have to do a roll call, Mr. Toth, I think?
Uh, who was, who, Mr. Snyder made the motion. Who was the second?
Mr. Romano.
Yeah.
You ought to say aye. It's on the agenda.
Want to roll call or voice vote?
Voice vote. Let's go for, unless someone objects. Aye.
All right, we're good.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any nays? Nope? All right. So now we'll open for public, so this is in the resolution now. This is in the agenda. Okay. So we'll just do a separate voting on this one.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Awesome. So now we'll open up for public comments for resolution. Mr. De Pasquale, I already called you once. So go ahead.
Tony De Pasquale, Two Pine Street. Wow, I haven't been here in a while and I could see all the fun I've been missing. Wow. So I'm a little confused. This is the first I'm hearing about the bathrooms. So from what I understand, this is in the budget. It's going to the co-op, so it's all ready to go. But the concern is that one company is getting four million dollars of work, as the other board member said, that we have other companies that are getting millions and millions of dollars of work. So are we putting a limit on one company on how much work we're going to give them? Like I, I'm confused as to why that would even be an issue. Why is that question brought up? That question should be brought up to every single company that we have now. Why is the bus company getting fifty million dollars? Why is this company? None of this is making sense. Unless somebody has a problem with that company other than that they're getting more work and the bathrooms for some reason may need, maybe somebody wants them delayed into the fall or, or I don't know. These are questions as a resident. It's coming to my mind and I'm a little confused why we would delay this if we have the money all ready to go. To me, that question of, well, we're giving one company too much work, doesn't matter. Every company is getting work. So, so I really would like to know the truth on what is the reason that the, the feeling is we're giving too much work to one company. There's more behind that. And unfortunately, the way things work in Edison is we say, well, it's a hundred and sixty or whatever, sixty-three thousand per bathroom, but we say it's four million dollars going to the company. And what happens is the four million dollar message goes out to all the residents. No, it's four million dollars now. It's going to cost four million dollars for bathrooms and it hides the truth of what the real amount is. It's the way it works. It's the way social media works. It covers that idea of what the true cost is. And as a resident, I have to tell you, it's very, very disappointing to see the board arguing over bathrooms. It's, I don't get it. You have a BA, you have a superintendent. The BA does all of this with the contracts. He, he is your expert and you are undermining the person that does and knows all of this. I don't know any of you that do the work that he does or knows the construction and all the contracts. If you're going to undermine your administration, then you might as well, and I'm not saying I want them to, you might as well just let them go. And you guys make all the decisions for what they're coming up with. Because you guys supposedly are the experts at this. Rely on your administration. Unfortunately, I'm sure there's some politics that's going on with these decisions also. So why don't we get with what we're supposed to do? Get bathrooms for the kids, get them done. Stop all these little silly arguments about, should we have public comment here? You guys are wasting so much time. I haven't seen this in years. And I'm sorry, but it's embarrassing as a resident. And I'm sorry, Mr. President, but you need to get a hold of how this board is working right now. Because you guys are at odds over bathrooms. Over bathrooms. What's the total of all the bathrooms? Can somebody tell me again?
Three.
What's that?
Twenty-three bathrooms?
Yeah, how much is total?
Back and forth comments during the, when public is speaking. Mr. De Pasquale, you can continue. Your time is...
One point, okay. So you have these projects that are millions and millions of dollars, and you are arguing over such a small amount. Tell me that makes sense. If you were in my seat as a taxpayer, seeing you guys waste all this time, it's really, really, really embarrassing. No, I have a minute left, but I'll let it go. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Nobody is against bathrooms, Mr. D. Pasqual. So I don't know why you said that. There's no back and forth, so I'm just gonna answer. I'm gonna answer.
I didn't hear you.
I'm gonna answer. I'm gonna say, you can sit down and you can hear.
I didn't hear you.
You can hear me. I'm.
No, I'm closer to the speaker, so I can hear you now.
Okay, you can stand there.
Okay.
All right, so nobody is against the bathrooms. It was about choice of company, the timings, cost, and everything. Board members are discussing that, right? And you tell me that I gotta get better control over the board?
Yes.
Listen, that's your opinion.
Yes, it is.
And here is what I'm doing, Mr. D. Pasqual. I have fought tooth and nail against anything that has to do with taxes, whether it's here or township or anything, and I, as a resident, and there is no back and forth.
It was passed already.
You made, you made your.
It was passed already.
Mr. D. Pasqual, Mr. D. Pasqual, you have to sit.
You're ignoring everything I said.
Mr. D. Pasqual, your time is over.
I know.
Your time is over.
But you tell the truth.
Mr. D. Pasqual, your time is over.
And stop ignoring what I said. You stop ignoring what I said.
Mr. D. Pasqual, your time is over.
You stop ignoring what I said.
Mr. D. Pasqual, your time is over.
You are ignoring what I said.
So nobody is against the bathroom. I don't know who instigates you outside. You haven't even called me in a while. You haven't spoken with me. I don't know who gets to you. You should probably call me. You have my phone number. Call me, and I will explain you everything about my position, where I stand and what I do and what I intend to do. Good, that you could be a board meeting, but I am asking you, give me a call. You have my number. I have your number, and we were never not in talking terms, Mr. D. Pasqual. So please feel free to give me a call, and I will tell you about the whole, and we can discuss and debate about what my positions are, what my views are. And then you can decide between now and next board meeting, that where, you know, because you directly called me out. You're gonna get handled and stuff like that, without hearing, without reaching out to me on where my position is and where do I stand, what my thoughts and views are. And I am concerned about the taxpayer dollars. This, so I have a decision that I don't like when one company gets all the work. That's it. I do agree with you. I was always in agreement with you, that there are companies which get millions of dollars of work. I was the biggest critic of that. Right now, some of the companies still exist, and some of the companies do get millions of dollars of work. We have school construction going on, right? So that scope of that work of building entire school is bigger than this, right? This year, so far, we have not awarded any school construction to any single company. Until last year, different boards did adopt. I was a part of those different boards too. Did award those school construction. Those are millions of dollars. There are vendors who are certain, work within a certain price range, and there are vendors who work more. So if something concerns us as a board, it concerns us. The taxpayers of Edison elect us to go and take a look at every single line item in the financial agenda, in the finance resolutions, and vote accordingly. It is our responsibility to look at every single financial item and vote accordingly. As a matter of fact, I had emailed Mr. Toth before a few weeks to get a list of every single vendor which is getting paid more than fifteen thousand dollars. Two years back, this is, this is, I have a floor. I'm the board president. I'm responding to a resident's public comment, so I have the floor, Mr. Hibble. I'm responding to a resident's comment.
I'm not a board member.
But it's not a board member. Board president is responding to a resident, right?
It's just a.
Okay. All right, so that's fine. You guys can talk in the, over there, but here's the thing. So I have asked for the list of those vendors, and I do intend to look at every single vendor who is getting paid more than fifteen thousand dollars. Two years back, I sent a similar email to Dr. Bregan, when he was doing the BA and the superintendent work. So I'm not gonna take a question from any resident versus board is, you know, why is board doing the due diligence? Yes. I'm gonna look into every single financial item that I can find, and I'm gonna question that as and when it comes across. Next for public comments. Mr. Shi.
Jerry Shiet. So, you know, just for the record, the fixing all the bathrooms in the school district was a direction we set last year under the leadership of Shannon Penn, and, you know, and also worked out with the Finance Facility Committee. The goal is to replace all the bathrooms in the school district. And again, we want to cost a lot of money, so just to wanna see the stages, you know, when then can be done. So just to oversight, the board, one of the board responsibilities is oversight, and oversight is not micromanagement. I just have a quick, some questions about this. Again, you know, we are all for the bathrooms, and I was the Finance Facility Chair. We made the plan to fix all the bathrooms. Let me repeat that again. So with Academy Construction, can I ask which co-op are they from, and how long they have been in that co-op? And as far as these twenty-three bathrooms, do we know the scope of the work? Are we just replacing the tiles, or we're doing the whole thing? So if I look at the bathroom right outside, which was in bad shape, and it's done, when the school's in session, and basically we replaced all the tiles, and they look nice, they redid the sink a little bit, and the floor, I think, was still the same. So what is the scope of the work? So you talk about sixty thousand dollars per bathroom, and the scope of the work makes a big difference, right? As far as the architect designs these stuff, and if we're talking about one point three million dollars, five percent of architecture fee, it's somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. If we can save more than that, then that's fine. As far as I know, there are bathroom remodeling going on right now, and I think last month, the Lincoln School Bathroom was just, got the remodel, just finished. So, you know, the work can be done. And also, just, you know, as Mr. Toth mentioned, that you need a budget to be approved in order to go out to bid. As far as I remember, at the end of last year, we have about seven and a half to nine million dollars cash in hand. So if we actually wanted to go out to bid last year, we couldn't do that, because we have the money to get that, four million dollars, you know, one point three out of seven, we have the money. So, you know, waiting for the budget approval for these to come out, I don't know if that's a good excuse, because we have money on hand. The other thing is, when Dr. Bregan was here, we talked about have a hiring a couple of permanent headcounts to, all they do is just fix bathrooms. I don't know what happened with that. So if we can follow up on that, and that might be looking down the road, that might save us a lot of money. So, you know, just to reiterate, fixing the bathroom was done last year, okay? Was not done the year before. Okay? If it's such an urgent, it should be done in 2022, but nothing was done. So for Mr. Schneider, the talk is becoming an emergency. You should have done it in 2022 when you were a school board president. Okay? So there are just a couple other things on the agenda here. So I see Finance Resolution Number Six, we're going to the same furniture vendor again. That's a furniture vendor that, you know, we gave them over two hundred thousand dollar business for TJ alone. So my question to the Facility Chair through the President, to the Facility Chairs, do we know, what are we buying? Do we know what are the, what was the unit price of these items? Okay? And also here, there's another item given to Academy Construction, Number Nine, ninety thousand dollars. It's a small amount. You know, if you wanna get it done with the Herbert Hoover, because the new gym is coming up, you wanna make it nice, okay. Color in the room. We have, we have been doing this for a long time. So ninety thousand dollars, small amount of money. So just to add to Bureau's point, if you add all of these together, that's quite a lot of money. I don't know why Academy Construction is so special. And also for co-op is, how many quotes or bids are we supposed to get for million-dollar projects? I don't know. If we only had two, that might be a little bit on the short side. If we can get more, that'd be really great, to have more comparison of that. So again, that's my comment. And I'm glad that, you know, we are moving forward with the bathroom, but needs to be responsible with taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board member comments? All right. Anyone's public comment, sorry. For the resolutions only. Mr. Maris, only for the resolutions. Okay, so motion to end public comments for resolutions.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will now move forward for motion to approve personal report. Even motion to approve personal report?
Motion.
Mr. Schneider? Mr. Vishal Patel, second. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes, but for any known conflicts, I abstain.
Noted. Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve Administration Curriculum Instruction People's Special Services Reports.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Romano, Mr. Vishal Patel, roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Sorry, I was talking to Mr. Romano. They're asking you to vote.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
That was my fault, sorry.
But we'll note that it was your fault too, Matt. President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is motion to approve Finance Report.
I have a question in regards to this report, because I do have some concerns.
Yes, Mr. Rivera.
Specifically, D. Two, Appointments of Special Counsel, and there's two firms that are listed. I didn't receive any information in regards to this firm or firms. No resumes, no qualifications. I don't even know who they are. So I feel uncomfortable voting for these two individuals. You know, I did my Google research, and one of the firms ends up being from Lawrenceville. I don't know why they're interested in Edison Public Schools, you know? And then I'm looking at the second one, and just the bad press alone through Google, I don't understand how these individuals made it this far. Like, so my question is, who actually vetted these two law firms? Because no one on the board got any information about them, so I don't feel comfortable voting for this. In my understanding, there was a third group that actually applied, the Bush Law Group. I don't understand why their name's not here, or why was there not a discussion to put them there. Like, David Rubin, I thought, did a phenomenal job for us while he was our counsel. So I'd like to put a motion to add the Bush Law Firm as one of the attorneys for this group. If we're gonna hire these two individuals, I feel more comfortable with an attorney that I know, not two that I don't know. So I'd like to put a motion to add them.
I'll second that.
Well, Mr. Minch, there was a time to add the motions. Now he's adding a motion. What are, I thought this was a roll call, motion to approve finance reports. If you are having concerns, I will let Mr. Toth answer. We'll have to get finance reports done right now.
My understanding is, I was allowed to do that motion, and now the motion's on the table, and it's been seconded.
You want a response from Mr. Toth about the lawyers, law firms, because I don't, I want to hear myself. So, Mr. Toth and Mr. Dr. Altrell, want to respond about the law firms.
I mean, to Mr. Rivera's question?
Yes.
Yeah, so we had a total of three law firms respond to the RFP, two of which are currently under the agenda, one that is not. We had the opportunity to review their RFPs, the reason why the other one isn't not. I've had conversations with board members, and it didn't seem like we had five votes to pass that law firm. So even though I'm a new superintendent, I can count to five, and if I didn't have those pieces, I knew that probably not something I'd put on the agenda for approval.
Well, no one spoke to me about this, so now I'm putting a motion to add this attorney to this group, the three, and Virginia White seconded it. So I, it's on the table. I want to vote. I want to put them on.
Yeah. Mr. Minch, we, and Mr. Romano, what do you say?
So in other words, there's a first and a second. So now there'll be a roll call to say yes to put this on the agenda? Is that what we're asking?
Yes, essentially to amend the resolution.
Since we don't adopt the agenda, I think the motion and the second automatically adds it under Robert's rules. I could be incorrect, but I think that's how it goes.
Well, that's not what we have happened before, right? We would have to do a roll call to add it on the, appended, amended on to the resolution.
You know, I, my knowledge of Robert's rules is not, I can't say that Mr. Toth is right or wrong. I've always seen, if you want to amend an agenda, you make a motion a second, you vote on amending the resolution, and then if it fails, then, then the board would vote on the resolution, which is currently here, which has two names on it. And if the motion passes to add the third firm name on, then the board would vote on the resolution as amended with all three.
Then this motion would be to amend, correct, Matt?
Yes, this motion would just be to amend.
Perfect.
And, Mr. President, so just to be clear, if this motion passes, then we have three law firms on.
Right.
And if somebody doesn't like a law firm, they could just vote no. Correct?
Correct. Presumably, if there's five votes to put it on, there would be five votes to approve it as a whole. But yes, you're absolutely correct. If you could still vote no, you could vote to add it to the resolution and then vote no on the resolution.
So we could add it to the agenda and then vote no if we wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
But in this instance, we are amending what's here. We're amending, as opposed to adding a brand-new item like earlier, this is amending what is here. So that's the mo, there's been a motion, there's been a second.
No, but then there won't be any choice to approve the first two.
No, so, so.
You're adding a third.
If you amend, if you approve, like, automatically amended with the third company, then there's no choice, there's no option.
Correct. You can vote no overall, if it gets passed. So right now, there's a motion and a second to amend the resolution. We need to have a roll call vote on that. If the third firm gets added on.
I don't think I can explain this well, Row.
If the third firm gets added on, there'd be a, afterwards, there's gonna be a motion to approve the finance reports as amended, or not, if it doesn't get amended.
Yeah, but it's not clear to all the board members that we can still pick and choose which two.
Oh, no, you can't pick and choose.
That's what.
No. So what is, right now, maybe I understand.
Who's telling me that you can pick and choose? So I think we should just.
I actually only listen, I only listen to Robert's rules.
First, vote on whether we need to amend this to the, to the agenda or not, because it's not clear that we can vote, pick and choose, or we cannot vote.
You can't. You can't. So.
Then why don't we have the choice to vote on amending this first?
Right. That, that's, what I'm saying to everybody is that we vote to, that the motion was made to vote to amend the resolution.
So the motion is to add Jonathan Bush's firm.
Correct.
To the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
As part of this, as part of this.
And that need to be voted right now, right?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay.
We're saying the same thing.
Why don't, yeah.
Yes, that's.
So, Mr. Minch, why don't the, why don't the board members have a choice to vote on everything separately? So, Mr. Minj, why don't the, why don't the board members have a choice to vote on everything separately?
Well, you.
No, no, they would have, you, you have to vote on the, the motion now.
Correct. That's what's currently in front of the, of front of the board.
To accept, to either yes or no on the motion.
Correct. Correct.
So a roll call has to be taken to accept. Or deny.
Right. That's the current motion.
Your position, Mr. Minj?
Yes, that's the current motion. If it fails, there's no more to hap, we don't need to continue discussing it any further. If it, if it passes, then it's added to the list. Regardless of what happens, there would then be a second motion on the total list. You can't pick and choose, though, which the firms, you'd either have two or three firms. You would vote yes or no. If you decide you don't like any of the firms or whatever, then you can vote no on two, you know, on, on whatever's there. Or you can vote yes, but that's, that's the two votes. So right now, it's a motion to amend, to add a third firm, there's a motion and a second, and there should be a roll call vote on whether or not you want to add the Bush Law Firm as one of your three Special Counsel that are listed on this resolution.
There's a roll call.
Am I calling roll?
I, I. I asked for a motion to approve Finance Reports, Mr. Minj, when this came up.
You asked for a motion, but nobody made it.
Okay.
So, so you asked for a motion, there was no, nobody made a motion.
Okay.
To, to approve the Finance Reports.
Well, that's your advice, so, yeah, I'm going to go with your advice.
Correct.
All right, so what's next, Mr. Minj?
There should be a roll call vote on amending the resolution that Mr. Rivera made. So if you want Bush Law Group added, you vote yes. If you don't want Bush Law Group added, you vote no.
Members here clear? Any questions? I really want to have every board member here, Wayne, ask questions, anyone? Because there are motions like this, so everyone should feel comfortable, you know, going into it from left to right.
No, no, there's.
Yes, Mr. Minj, what about public comments? Can we open up for public comments? I'm going to go with your advice now.
You, you can, you, you can do whatever you want. I, I don't, I don't have to say this.
Do whatever I want is not the advice I had, Mr. Minj. That's, that's not how we can, I'm relying on your legal advice, Mr. Minj.
So legally, you are not required to open it to the public. You've already opened it to the public. You do not have to reopen it for discussion from the public on this particular issue.
Okay.
Is it, I just have one question. Is it really okay to add a resolution or a motion after a bunch of motion already, public resolution, public comments has been finished? So the public has no chance to comment on this? And just added a, a motion in the middle of a roll call? Is that okay?
So, so first of all, the, from a legal standpoint, I'm not talking about policy, I'm talking about law. There is no requirement that the public have an opportunity to comment on every item on your agenda or every motion that's made before it's made. That's not part of the law. The law of open public meeting simply requires that you allow a public comment at some portion in your meeting. Okay, so there's nothing that says you can't add it items, subtract items, and that every time you add or subtract something, you need to reopen it to the public. So.
But that would be suppressing the public comments.
You, you, I'm talking about the law, you guys could talk about the, the policy. If you, if you, just like before, there can be a, you know, somebody would have to make a motion to table the vote. On the other question is, if I recall correctly, and certainly Mr. Toth can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe there was a motion and a second on the, on the motion to approve the Finance Reports. But I, I, even if there was, there can be a motion to amend the motion that's been made. So regardless.
To my, to my quick recollection, we only had a motion from the Board President, I believe, on the Finance Reports. And then we, Mr. Rivera called a motion for amendment to the agenda, which was seconded by, by Mr. Schneider to add Bush Law Group. I'm sorry, Ms. White, pardon me, it's late, haven't had any coffee. To add Bush Law Group to the resolution for attorney.
Correct.
So we have that active resolution on the table in regards to amending the.
Correct.
Right, so should.
So it's, it's my legal advice that we should just have a vote. But the, the, the board can still table it for purposes of just tabling it. The board can table it for open to the public, the board can vote yes, the board can vote no.
Okay, so any board members have any more questions?
Roll call.
We do roll call? But what is the motion here? Motion is to add, right?
The motion is to add Bush Law Group as one of the three firms to the resolution that's currently being decided as part of the Finance Reports.
And just to confirm, if it's added, you have to approve all three or deny all three?
Correct.
No, you don't have to approve all three.
You could amend it. We could amend it.
Well, that's.
Okay, so this is just for the amendment to add the law firm, Bush Legal Group. Okay, here we go. Mr. Lugo. Yes. Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
No.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
No.
Mr. Romano.
No.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, so now, if there's no other amendments or any other motions, there'd be a motion on the Finance Reports as a whole.
Motion on the Finance Report. Need a second.
I'll give you a second on the motion for the Finance Report.
Correct.
A motion by Mr. Schneider and a second by Mr. Romano.
And so right now, this is a motion to approve the Finance Reports in their entirety, which would include the three, all three law firms that have been, that have been, you know, now added to the list. So you can vote yes or no on the package.
Okay, you guys ready? Mr. Lugo. Can I vote yes for one and three and not two?
I'm sorry, I heard yes and.
Yes for one and three, no for number two?
Yes, you can.
On which resol, one and, okay, which resolution? D two?
So what Mr. Lugo is saying is he wants to vote yes for, for the Finance Reports for Items One. I'm looking at the five, I assume you're talking about D, the Procurement Report. Correct, Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Yeah, so Mr. Lugo wants to vote yes on Item One, which is the architectural firms. Yes to the specification for the, for the bids, for the fire alarms and the professional development, and no to the law firms.
No from, that's correct.
No on, no on number two.
So he's voting no on all three law firms.
Got it, noted. Mr. Vishal Patel.
No.
Mr. Rivera.
No on Lennox and in Glassino and yes on Bush.
You can't do that. It's all, it's all or nothing.
All or nothing.
On all of them.
Okay. Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
No, I, this is, again, a surprising resolution. I have to vote no.
I'm sorry?
Nope.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
No.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we'll go move forward to our committee reports.
I think, sorry, I, I think you'd want to do, you still need to do the motion on the bathrooms.
There is motion on the bathroom.
Oh, I thought that was included. No? No. Okay, let's do that.
Motion on the bathrooms.
Okay. So we already have a motion on the floor and a second, so now I'm just going to call roll on this.
New motion and a second. Mr. Schneider amended, so I assume Mr. Schneider wants to make the motion again?
Again, the motion on the floor is to add the twenty-three bathrooms that were in the original agenda from last month. At a total of one point three nine three five three six, that's a million, one point three nine three million five thirty-six. And I think Mr. Romano was the second.
I think I, I would like to second that.
Thank you very much.
Motion by Mr. Rom, uh, motion by Mr. Schneider, seconded by Mr. Romano. Mr. Lugo. Yes. Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
So this is the, okay, I have to say, there's no communication whatsoever about this resolution before this meeting. There's no, I don't know where is the transparency from the committee or where is the communication from the committee, so I have to abstain.
Abstain. Vice President Romano.
Yes, on the bathrooms. Yes, I gotta go to the bathroom. Yes.
President Patel.
Yes, with a, with a softer tone compared to Mr. Romano's.
Carries.
Mr. President, barring there being any other motions, then we can move on to the committee reports.
All right, so now we'll move on to our committee reports. First, we have our ad hoc secondary culture and climate committee. Our meeting was May first, this is a committee that we decided on, you know, earlier this year to tackle the issues with drugs, vaping and bathroom and all the situations. So participants were myself, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Chris Hoss, Mr. Pat Kessan, Mr. Ross, Mrs. Blevins, Mr. Barca, Ms. Heather Daniel, and Matt Ravnak. The committee's goal was to address some of the concerns raised regarding student bathroom use and safety as well as an update on our district's harassment, intimidation and bullying data. The committee discussed vaping as a universal issue affecting not only the students of Edison, but students nationally. The committee engaged in a meaningful conversation on ways to prevent and/or deter students from congregating and utilizing the bathroom to vape. This included expanding the smart detectors infrastructure, revisiting the code of conduct for uniformity in our approach and running monthly reports to analyze trends in the behavior. Further, the committee wanted to take a proactive approach to informing students about the harms of vaping. Conducting presentations, assemblies, get speaker series and videos for both students and parents were all activities the committee believed would have been beneficial. Seeking input from stakeholders is very essential and the committee discussed several means of going forward with it and to commit to reconvene after the parent community webinar. Lastly, the committee reviewed data points indicating a decline in the number of bullying incidents as well as confirmed bullying cases for past two years. The committee commended our staff, counselors and parents for all their efforts and meeting concluded at two o'clock. The next is Finance Reports, which included the bathrooms. Mr. Romano, you were there in the committee. So we discussed Success Academy Furniture. Success Academy, uh, is getting furniture with CFI. It includes four offices, including principals, main office, guidance, security. Classrooms fully outfitted with students' desks and teacher workstations. Conference room to accommodate group parent meetings or group room sitting, teachers lounge. Committee asked for clarification on the timing and other aspects for the co-op and it was mentioned that this needs to be started soon and needs to be completed to get the alternate school in operation by September. Great job, Dr. Thui, with all the efforts that you're making with the alternate school. Herbert Hoover Culinary Room renovation, this is another item that is awarded to Academy Construction, which are also the subject in the bathrooms. Similar renovation was completed at Woodrow Wilson last year. And demolition includes new flooring, ceiling, lighting, removal of all the equipment for redesign of the room. New electric in different areas and moving plumbing to accommodate new locations for commercial things. Committee was informed that this needs to be done up and ready by school opening and it is time sensitive. Committee asked about different co-op and was informed about educational data services and ECSNJ, those are the two co-ops, right? We discussed at length, Mr. Toth. There was an update regarding shared services, which I started before a couple of years and the Bond Council and financing summary. So the idea was brought upon the committee and Mr. Toth looked into several options, spoke with the Bond Council and provided his research and information that he received from the Bond Council. Lindenour renovation project, SSP Architect is going to do a concept design. Proposal is to modify storage room into classes. So updating the phone system, Mr. Barca and Mr. Kessan are handling the project of upgrading phone system at Washington School and the Success Academy. Per response to Architect RFP, four firms which were top per the metrics and rankings done by business administrative team are listed, were listed and we voted upon them today as our new architects on record, DMR, SSP, EI and PSA. Uh, Mr. Toth provided update on bid status, waiting for New Jersey Controller response and Mr. Minj response. So I hope Mr. Minj provided that response to you by now, so we can move forward with the bidding. And there is no delay in the bidding for masonry, for HVAC, for boiler cleaning and boiler service and maintenance. So, Mr. Minj, I hope you have provided the response that Mr. Toth was looking for here. Committee was informed that the bid is out as goods and services, which has been a prospectus, which probably should have gone out as public works bid. Mr. Toth had reached out to the attorney and wa, was waiting the response at that time. So while I am at this, did we get the response sorted out? Did you get the response from Mr. Minj?
Yes, we did get a response from Mr. Minj's law firm, right? So we have the bids active on the street, we took the necessary, made the necessary addenda changes and shouldn't delay our timeline.
Okay, all right, then summer work review, Academy Construction. Uh, oh, this is the same bathroom thing we reviewed, so we don't want to, everyone heard enough of that. Okay, we discussed the bid status, JMI, there are certain concerns with US Architect, you know, so they will get back to, we'll have more updates in the next meeting. And John Marshall, DMR was there and they'll be ready to bid by September. Professional services renewal, the dis, renewed our district auditors, Bond Council and our financial advisors, Akashia. Discussion about attractor, Mr. Colibas knows more about it, so I'm going to not give too much information on that. And there was a DMR presentation with Switchgear. Apparently, committee was told that DCO Energy, uh, by DCO Energy, this is not an additional cost to the district. It comes out of EC program as a part of contingency. And just as DCS project is about to finish, the architects will go ahead with the design as item like this would be time consuming and per past experiences, there are supply chain issues as well with this. There was an update on John Marshall School provided by DMR Architects. Uh, Edmonton software license for forty-five K. Uh, committee asked DMR to provide updates on long range facilities plan and which is going to be discussed in upcoming, uh, meetings by DMR Architect and Business Office, right? The meeting was very long, almost two and a half hours. Thank you, that concludes the committee reports. Now we will open up to public comments. Mr. Mara.
Good evening, Anthony Mara, five Coletto Court. I'm again here on Policy Fifty-seven, fifty-six. And I want to stop by thanking Mr. Vishal Patel for the brief discussion he and I had earlier today, earlier this evening. He pointed out that Policy Fifty-seven, fifty-six is not just about saying no to mom and dad. I went home and I printed the policy. And I had a nice little agenda worked out for tonight. Uh, for what I was going to say, it was basically going to be a follow-up on the email that I sent. But after I read this policy tonight, line by line, my blood started to boil. This policy is atrocious. This policy reeks of protection for transgender, but actually persecutes those who are straight. How does it do that? Let me read it to you. The third page. With respect, with respect to gender segregated classes or athletic activities, including intramural or interscholastic athletics, all students must be allowed to participate in a manner consistent with their gender identity. In plain terms, those who are born as men can compete with women. We've seen this in the news and now it, it's apparently in our, our Edison Public Schools. That is discriminated against women. Same page, all students are entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms, changing facilities in accordance with their gender identity, identity to allow for involvement in various school programs and act, and activities. In other words, those who are born as men, or I suppose as women, can share the other gender bathroom. Straight individual students are being persecuted. If you think Policy Fifty-seven, fifty-six is the end of it, you're very wrong. This will continue. The persecution that is here will increase. There will be two groups of students. There'll be those who are straight and those who are whatever they want to choose. We are allowing students to dictate their education. They're here by definition because they don't know things. They learn math, they learn science, social studies, and then whatever else is taught in school. They behave as if they know all about life, including gender identity. I'm 67 years old, I'm still learning, but I've got more years under my belt than they do. I've already spoken to the board before about the consequences, the increased risk of suicide. Do they know that? Are they educated about it? Rendering themselves unable to have children, do they really consider that? It's your job, it's the school's job to educate them, but it's not being done. This policy needs to be trashed, it needs to be abolished. Put up a fight, do something to fight against it, stand up for what's right. Our children deserve it. Oh, but, Mr. Mara, we have, there are laws. If we do something like that, we may lose federal funding. Since when is there anything that's worthwhile but ever done without a fight? Our nation was founded with a fight, the Revolutionary War. It may not win, but at least put up a fight, do something to stop this, because I can guarantee you, it'll get worse. The persecution will get worse, and nothing is being done by the board. Do something to stop the persecution. Oh, and by the way, yeah, mom and dad are being disrespected in this policy. I pointed that out in my last email. Mother's Day has come and gone, Father's Day is coming. What a wonderful way it would be to honor mom and dad, to wipe out the policy, and in particular, that particular section. I could go on and on. Put up a fight, stop the persecution, it is persecution, that's exactly what it is. The ladies, the females in the schools, I can't imagine what they must think when a person walks into the bathroom saying, "I'm transgender," whatever terminology wants to use. I feel for them. Do something to stop it, because if it isn't stopped, it will continue until, I don't even want to think what the end will be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Mr. Minaj.
Minaj Patel, I'm sure many of you know why I'm here. I know Doctor's smiling already, so you know I'm going to go after him. Today, one dream died. After teaching 78,000 Edison students, the music director of JP Stevens High School passed away this morning, Andy DiNocola. What did he ask? "I want to teach my students music, give me band equipment." It took me four years of fighting with Jerry Shi and all of you sitting up there. Finally, I got $450,000 for my two high schools, thanks to Doug, and I believe finance was in hand of peril. Thank you for that, but at that time, we also asked for one more thing. We spending lot of money on trailers, trucks, equipment's being broken every time when he moves from one truck to the other. Please get us trailers. DiNocola's only dream was, Minaj, you think I will get my four trailers, two for Edison and two for JP, in my lifetime? With this board and the boards previously, it didn't happen. Believe me, it hurts. We paying taxes left and right, you guys fighting for bathroom, you're fighting for little things like little kids. But what you need for kids is trailers, and you guys couldn't do it. I had a meeting six months back with a couple of you guys, and said, "Yeah, it's on the board, we got new BA." Bullshit, he's worse than you guys. Your BA is holding vouchers and things left and right, and don't let me, don't say that he don't, I'm telling you right now. You got him at a little school somewhere in Matruchen, put him in a district that has 180 kids in JP, 120 band kids in Edison High School, and he's telling, "You don't spend this kind of money, our high school don't." Well, your Matruchen school is a tiny bit, and my schools are bigger. Guys, the dream passed away. If you guys even have a little dignity tonight, honor the man, get the goddamn four trailers and put them in schools before his funeral. Have some courtesy to the man. Let me tell you, 78,000, 19,000 doctors went to his music class. Out of those three is in my house. And all of my kids says today, "Dad, give it to them, they deserve it." Every board member deserves it. I know somebody shut it off, but my volume is loud enough. You guys need to do this as soon as possible, because you're going to see me every goddamn meeting, and every meeting I come is going to get worse than this. I want those trailers. I promise you one thing, and he was that, Jerry Shi, I'll get you advertisers to get that money back, but get those trailers right away. Everything is approved, and it's still not done. Pictures are given, still not done. And Doctor, you know very well, you and I spoke on this subject three months back, and I don't think it takes that long to approve this. I'm sorry to say, but all of you guys failed one man's dream for his kids. Today, all the kids are asking for one thing, and believe me, if I went, if I got a chance to speak in funeral, I'm going to ask each and every kid to come in this meeting and speak about it. And you won't be going home until two nights after. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Mr. DePasko.
Tony DePasko, Pine Street. So my first question is, is that you guys use Robert's Rules for your meetings. And from my understanding, at meetings that use Robert's Rules, you should have an authority of Robert's Rules, and I'm not picking on the lawyer or anybody, but my question is, when you follow Robert's Rules, but you don't have anybody on that stage that can say, "Well, yes, this is what Robert's Rules says," or "This is what Robert's Rules doesn't say." I don't get it, like, why even follow Robert's Rules if you don't know what Robert's Rules says about certain topics? And I'm not saying you have to know everything, but it didn't seem like that one decision was that difficult. So I would really consider somebody have the book with them, they do a small book of Robert's Rules, that, so that would probably help, so if this comes up again. The other thing is, is that I see all these people here, and the reason I knew what was happening tonight is because somebody on the board decided to tell somebody, and from what I understand, it's a friend, that there was going to be a vote on the insurance brokers tonight, and this person decided to put it all on social media, and even accused a board member of shouldn't be voting for this, this, and this, and said it was on the agenda. So what I'm confused about, and I would like to know, and I'm sure I won't find out, but who would have told a resident what only the board should have known about a vote you were having tonight? The only reason that, in my opinion, that board member would tell that to somebody is to, again, put the false narratives out there that we all know Edison does. So you guys up there represent us. And again, the representation is, one of you is putting out these false stories or this information that the residents should not know unless it's on the agenda or they come to the board meeting and find out. And this has been going on for years. Board members use social media, but they don't do it themselves, sometimes they do, but they use their friends to let them know information to put out there so before the board meeting, they can go and talk about this board member or that board member. Are you guys teenagers? Are you serious? You're adults. Act like adults. You are in charge of a school system of thousands of kids, and you act like the kids. I can't even believe I have to say this. Again, it's embarrassing. It is embarrassing that we vote you guys in, and you act like this. And I know it's not all of you, but I'm not going to name names, because the person who I'm talking about knows full well who this person is, who they told, who this person was that put it on social media. And I know who the person was. But just so you all know, and you're aware of this, you have a board member amongst you that is using somebody else to put the message out on social media about information that the residents shouldn't know until a certain time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for public comments, Beth.
Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue. Tonight should have been a night of celebration, the meetings turned a little bit contentious. I don't like to see that, and I'd like to take a moment to honor two of our Eagles that we lost the last two days. Although I knew who James Muldowney was, I'm not a personal friend of him, but wishes to his family and prayers to them all. It's a shame gone too soon, and he's touched the lives of many of our students and colleagues and parents throughout our town. I'd also like to speak personally on behalf of Andrew DiNocola, who I've known, I'm going to cry, since I was 13. He taught me, as well as my five siblings, as well as my three children and thousands of other children in our district. I'd like to wish his wife, his beloved wife, who he loved to death, Kathy DiNocola, and his two children, as well as his grandchildren, prayers and blessings to them all going through this, and to thank them for sharing him with our district for 50 years. Through his career, as you know, was mentioned before, he has touched the lives of our children, not only teaching them, you know, phenomenal music abilities with his knowledge. He has also taught them to be phenomenal people and human beings. I hope we can all take a minute tonight to realize that there's more to this back-and-forth fighting, that we can get things done without that. And just, you know, tonight, I miss Andy dearly, as many do and will, and just, you know, hugged your loved ones a little bit tighter tonight, because tomorrow's not guaranteed, guys, and this fighting, you know, let's stop and let's try to work together and get things done, thank you.
Thank you. Next for board public comments, Jerry.
Jerry Shi, Edison. Just want to echo what Beth said. In the past two days, we lost two teachers dearly loved by the students in Edison School District, Jim Muldowney, 36 years of service, and Andy DiNocola, 50 years of service. I know Andy a little bit better, because both my kids were in his program for four years. I was a band parent for seven years. He is a phenomenal teacher, and I believe Jim is also a phenomenal teacher. They get the best of these students. They're not only teaching them the subjects that they're teaching, they also teach them how to be a good citizen. Both of them will be dearly missed. Change of the topic, just want to congratulate Mr. Ravnak and Mrs. Seleski for winning the teacher union president and recording secretary. There are seasoned leaders for that group, and they're in good hands. The teacher union is in good hand in the seasoned leaders. Just observing the meeting today, just want to add some comments as to how, you know, some of the board members did. Doug Schneider, last year, you said you're not going to add agenda items on the fly. You just did today. And Brian, if you're going to add the lawyer on the agenda, why don't you add at the very beginning, allow public comments? You said you did not receive resumes from any of the attorneys. Did you receive resume from Dave Rubin two years ago? Okay?
And there's no back and forth, let the speaker finish.
My floor. You can't have a double standard. Okay, you want other people to do, but when it comes to you, you have a double standard. You can't do that. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next for public comments, Matt.
Good evening, Matt Ravnak, ETA Vice President, President-elect. So first of all, a couple of things. It is a day of varied emotions, for those of us that knew both Andy and Jim. I was colleagues with both of them basically for 35 years. And it's a big loss to two legends of this district. I know the people at JP Stevens this morning were shocked, even though we knew Andy was having some health issues, and even more so perhaps of Jimmy. Just to share a little story with Andy, the type of person he was. Not only was he a great teacher, the kids that had him loved him, but as you probably remember or know, he was up for the first Grammy Award for an educator in music. He was one of three finalists, and he didn't win it. And I saw him the next day, because we parked pretty much next to each other for almost 35 years. And I asked him, Andy, I congratulated him on it, and I asked him about it, he's like, "Matt," he's like, "The person that won is very deserving." And that tells you the type of person Andy was. You know, very humble gentleman, and the word gentleman describes him. Not only was he a great teacher, not only was he a great colleague, a great friend, but he really was a true gentleman to everybody that knew him. Jimmy Muldowney, Jimmy was a awesome baseball coach here at Edison High School, had some great teams in the 90s. I was actually coaching the JP Stevens when he was coaching here at Edison. Then he became an athletic director and supervisor, and again, a true gentleman. You know, being the ETA grievance chair, we sometimes have differences, but he's a guy I know I could always sit down with, we could always work it out, talk it through, and come to some kind of agreement. My other relationship with Jimmy was, both of our daughters were playing softball on the travel circuit at the the travel circuit at the same time, my older daughter and his daughter. By the way, his wife and daughter are still in the district. Daughter's a teacher, mother's a secretary. And we would sit together at some of these tournaments. I think our kids only played each other once, and like I always do with opponents, parents, my daughters were both pitchers as well. We'd sit in the outfield away from everybody else. When your daughter's pitchers, you kind of isolate yourself from everyone. You don't want to hear people complain. But we had a great, great time sitting together, whether it was the one time our kids played against each other, or when they were just in the tournaments together, we always found time to meet up with each other and talk. My condolences to both families, the DiNocolo family and the Muldowney family. They will basically both be greatly missed, and again, it's a sad day for our district. The second part of your motion is what happened tonight. The positive. The teacher and support recognition is always a great night, just like the student recognition. And when I looked at the list and so who is there, I'm like, every one of those people are deserving. I know most of them. I've seen most of them in action. They do a great job, as do most of our other staff, our teachers, our support staff, et cetera. And I appreciate, Dr. Alderelli, you mentioning that. These were the recipients this year, but there's a ton of other people out there doing a great job on a daily basis. So, again, I thank the board for recognizing them. They are very deserving, and congratulations to them. The final thing I want to mention this weekend is coming up, Memorial Day weekend. You know, everybody's worried, you know, thinking about the shore, the picnics, but please remember what the day's about. It's remembering those people that lost their lives and served their time for this country to give us the freedoms and the things that we have in this country that many other countries don't have. So, when you're out there enjoying yourself at your picnics, down at the beach, walking the boardwalk, whatever it is, first of all, be safe, but second of all, keep those people in mind. That's really what the holiday's supposed to be about. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Anyone else for public comments? All right, saying none, motion to end public comments.
Second.
Mr. Vishal Patel, Mr. Rivera. At this point, we will adjourn to privileged session.
I do have one comment before.
Yes, Mr. Vishal Patel, absolutely, go ahead. Oh, sorry, we'll have board member comments or any general things if we like to have. Go ahead, Mr. Vishal.
I mean, I feel obligated to comment on Mr. Anthony's persistence in coming here about, you know, Policy 5756, and I agree partially with him, and I say that for two reasons. I agree with him that there are flaws in 5756, because it says parent consent is not required when, not required for school to accept students' assertion of change in gender. It says there is no affirmative duty for school district to notify the parents when the student is going through that, so I disagree with that, because I believe parent or legal guardian are the, you know, best people to make a decision for the kid and what's right for the kid, period. I mean, the law requires that. When a kid under 18 goes for driving license, law requires parent consent. When they go for the job, law requires parent consent. God damn it, when they're volunteer, law requires parent consent, then why not for this? Second reason I say partially, and I'm saying partially because the policy also protects the safety and support and confidentiality of those students, which I think as a district, we are accountable to do that, but not without parent consent. So, I would ask the administration to look into it and see what can we do to find the balance of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Saying none. We will adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA Section 10412, Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following professional services interviews. We do not expect to come back from the privileged session today. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.